I'm here.
It's Pastor Snare on that.
Just drops.
Our, our hooking up off the couch.
Taps into the, the, the mechanism, so don't, yeah, don't, you just pull your cells electrical, whatever. It's here. All right, I'll ask you. You want me to ask you right now?
Austin, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Coolianus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner.
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Here.
Commissioner Di Donato.
Here.
Commissioner Vanther.
Here.
Our reflection tonight, uh, will be, it says will be given by Reverend Kurt Snare. I don't, I don't see him here. So I'm going to ask the city attorney to lead us in a prayer.
Do it. Yeah, go ahead. It'll be very short.
If we may bow our heads and ask for guidance tonight in a, in the decisions made by the elected officials, that it meets the favor of the residents and that we proceed forward with, in best interest of the city of Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
Did a good job. Want us to do the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with the religion and justice for all.
Okay, we have a few proclamations to, to do.
It's a miracle.
So tonight, uh, we have three proclamations. Uh, the first one is Jewish American Heritage Month. I'm going to read this and, and give it to our, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Eisner. Um, before I, before I read this, um, you know, the Vice Mayor, he knows that, um, I grew up in a Jewish neighborhood in Gary, Indiana, and, um, pretty much all my friends growing, as I was growing up, were Jewish. Uh, I actually pledged a Jewish fraternity in college at Indiana University. So I have really strong affinity for Jewish people, and I know all that you guys have gone through, um, but, and some of the most decent people I knew growing up and who treated me the best were my Jewish friends' families, so.
Well, don't expect that from me. I'm sorry, I'm just a comedian here, that's all.
Okay, City of Tarpon Springs proclamation, whereas Jewish immigrants to America, ever since the first arrival to our shores in the sixteenth century, have played a central role in the creation, growth, freedom, prosperity, and strength of the United States of America. Whereas this month, the City of Tarpon Springs joins Americans of all backgrounds in celebrating the foundational contributions of Jewish Americans to the fabric of our nation. And whereas we recognize the enduring faith, perseverance, and resilience of the Jewish people, and lift up the many ways that Jewish Americans enriched our culture, politics, civil society, and countless other areas. And whereas we celebrate these accomplishments, we must also recognize the bigotry and violence that Jews have faced throughout history and that shamefully persists to this day. And whereas we will continue to lead the fight to confront racial, ethnic, and religious hate across our society with education and empathy. And whereas this Jewish American Heritage Month, let us pray, let us pay tribute to the many and varied contributions of the Jewish people to our community and celebrate our common commitment to pleurism, cultural diversity, and religious freedom. Now, therefore, I, John Coolianus, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of May, twenty twenty-five, as Jewish American Heritage Month.
Make me look taller. So, oh my God. Um, what I wanted to say was, um, you know, I'm sure if you follow any of the newspapers today, you will see there is antisemitism out there. Um, my short and sweet comment is there's no room for hatred in any race, creed, color, religion. Um, everybody is God's people, and we should all respect one another. Uh, we can differ with one another, and we should do it gracefully, but there's just no place to do harm to one another or to, um, do hate speech. There's a big difference between, uh, protest, and there's a big difference between hate speech. So that's my comment, and I thank you all for coming here and, uh, helping me represent Jewish Heritage Month. Thank you.
Our next proclamation is National Safe Boating Week, and since Mike is an avid boater, I'm going to let him do the honors on this one.
We need to do something here.
Got to lower it down.
I need like the... You could hear me?
Yes.
Sure you could hear me even in the house, honey. Um, okay. So I am a boater, and, uh, before I even read this, I just want to tell you, um, I'm also an advocate on, you know, safe boating. Uh, one of my pet peeves, and my wife knows this, is it just disturbs me to see people, especially young kids, on the front of boats. Um, they don't realize it's all fun until it isn't fun. So, uh, I, I will tell you that I'm always telling them to try to keep their kids inside on the other side of the rail. And I know these gentlemen here, it's got to be a pet peeve of theirs, the whole idea is to try to keep, uh, youngsters safe, as well as having a life preserver, but I'll let you speak on that. So, uh, first I'm going to read this. It's okay. Um, whereas on average, six hundred fifty people die each year in boating-related, um, accidents in the U.S., whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat equipment or environmental factors. Whereas safe boating begins with preparation. The Coast Guard and the Auxiliary Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly seventy-five percent of the boating fatalities, fatalities. And whereas though basic boating safety procedures carrying lifesaving, emergency distress, and communication equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. And whereas National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters. The City of Tarpon Springs recognizes the support of Tarpon Springs Flotilla, oh seven oh dash one one dash oh nine, of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary and federal, state, and local safe boating partners in their effort to educate the public and promote safe boating. Now, therefore, I, John Coolianus, to my right, by virtue of the authority vested in him as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the week of May seventeenth to the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, as National Safe Boating Week. And as you all know, before I present this, there was a very serious boating incident that happened in Clearwater that I don't want to talk about right now, but there'll be things that come out from, you know, from down the road when it's investigated. But we all want to have a great time on the water, and we also want to make sure that we come back safe and sound. So this is for what you guys do. I appreciate you, and thank you very much for what you do.
I just want to say real quick before I turn it over to my public affairs officer, Steve Denhoff, um, we all live here, and the, the, the safety and then the security of our waterways is very important, not to me because I've lived here my whole life, but to all of us because we have such a great natural resource here in Tarpon Springs. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Steve Denhoff, my public affairs officer.
Thank you. Well, listen, on behalf of, uh, Flotilla eleven-nine, I want to thank you, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, and Board of Commissioners, um, uh, for the honor of your proclamation, uh, kicking off National Safe Boating Week. I want to give you a little background on us. I don't know how many of you are up to speed on Flotilla eleven-nine, but, uh, we're a volunteer organization committed to boating safety, marine security, and environmental protection. We are twenty-five members, uh, twenty-five members strong, and have served the Tarpon Springs community and its waterways for over fifty years. In support of National Safe Boating Week, uh, we're going to step up our efforts, uh, to raise awareness about boating safety. In that, throughout the week of, uh, May, uh, May seventeenth, we'll be offering free vessel safety checks at Anclot River Boat Ramp Park on May seventeenth from nine to one. So these, uh, examinations help boaters ensure their vessels carry the required safety equipment and, uh, meet federal and state, uh, regulations. Additionally, our auxiliary members will staff a safe boating information table at West Marine here in Tarpon Springs from nine to one. Boaters can drop by and ask questions, pick up free boating materials and promotional items. Also, we're going to provide free vessel safety checks there. You just pull up in the front of West Marine, and we'll come out and do your vessel safety check. Uh, we're also going to have a safe boating table at, uh, Lowe's in Tarpon Springs from nine to one. Now, the U.S. Coast Guard statistics show that drowning was the reported cause of death in three out of four recreational boating fatalities in twenty twenty-four. And eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of those who drowned were not wearing a life vest. So earlier this month, I visited many of the, uh, marinas here on, um, the Anclot River, and we put up, we gave them these all-weather signs to remind boaters to wear their safety vests. Now, I went to Craig Park and Sunset Beach Boat ramps, but couldn't find any attendants on duty, so I thought that maybe, Mayor, you could do the honor of putting those up at the, uh, respective boat ramps.
This is the man who'll do it.
As it relates to maritime safety, at the request of the U.S. Coast Guard Station Sand Key, Flotilla eleven-nine embarked on two separate missions following Hurricanes Helene and Milton to inspect aids to navigation and, uh, for damage. Many of the day markers in the beacons were documented and reported damaged. This mission covered the Anclot Anchorage, as well as the intercoastal waterway from Newport Ritchie all the way down to Dunedin Causeway. In addition, at the request of U.S. Coast Guard Sector St. Pete, we provided watch standards to receive distress calls to relieve active duty during the hurricanes. We support the U.S. Coast Guard active duty with their C twenty-seven airdrops exercised from Clearwater Air Station, uh, and two-boat exercises with Station Sand Key. So we're very, very busy. During these exercises, we are always available for search and rescue missions if the need arise. We will continue to collaborate with Tarpon Springs community by providing public boating safety classes at the Tarpon Springs Fire Rescue Station. A shout-out to Chief Scott Young for allowing us to use the facility there. It's fantastic, works great. And we also are thankful to Tarpon Springs Yacht Club, where we are invited to conduct our monthly safety meetings. So if any of you are interested in joining the auxiliary, raise your hand, and we'll be glad to chat with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. And you have such a projecting voice, I don't think you even use the microphone. I've got to work on that. So, um, so our next proclamation, um, is going to be National Public Works Week, and receiving the proclamation will be, uh, Mr. Bob Robertson. Um, he's our project administrator, but he's also our interim, uh, public works director until we locate our, our new replacement. So, you know, public works is really the heartbeat of the town. It's, it's, and it's got to be the toughest job because public works is the one, are the guys who keep the streets clean, are constantly maintaining everything that we see, and, and, you know, we could have the greatest town, but if it's not clean and maintained, it doesn't look like a great town. And it's a never-ending job. It's like, you know, cleaning your house, right? It's, and doing the laundry, it's like constant. So they work really hard, and, uh, we need to appreciate them, and that's why we're doing this proclamation. So whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Tarpon Springs. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, uh, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for all, all of our citizens. And whereas it is the, in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Tarpon Springs to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public work programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year twenty twenty-five marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now, therefore, I, John Coolianus, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth through May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Linda, for being our official photographer tonight.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing National Public Works Week. Uh, on behalf of the Public Works Department and as its interim director, I'm honored to accept this and, um, acknowledge the, the staff that work hard to keep our city running. That would be our storm, Streets and Stormwater Division, Solid Waste, Yard Waste, Marina, Parks, Parkway's, Fleet Maintenance, and Facilities Maintenance. We do a lot of stuff there. Um, it's their hard work and commitment that make a real difference every day, so thank you to them, thank you to you, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, before we, um, move on, the, um, we have two items on the agenda, items eleven and twelve, which are being deferred. They're being deferred this evening to allow the city attorney to further research qualifications on, uh, a couple of board appointments. Now, let's go to public comments. Um, we have public comments on any of the proclamations or on any items not on the agenda tonight. So if something's on the agenda, you, you have to wait till that item comes up, but, um, we can do.
And also consent agenda.
Yes, when you, uh, please state your name and your address, please.
Jane Harrington, ten twenty-one Jamaica Way, Tarpon Springs. Excuse me. Um, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, um, thank you for holding these meetings, and I want you to know that they're very important, and my husband and I do come to almost every meeting. Therefore, I'd like to comment on the suggestion by the mayor at the last meeting regarding summer attire at your future board meetings. Ever since I've been attending the meetings, we've always had a hot summer. We've always had, everyone still continued to dress professionally. You represent the city and hold the highest office and are the decision-makers of our city. I believe professionalism and professional attire is called for. Meetings are often taped by TV crews and are seen by many people. They are videoed for all the people of the city to see them at home. Wear your polo shirts outside, events, openings, ribbon cuttings, casual events, where there's no air conditioning. I go to those, and I do dress more casually. This building is air-conditioned and comfortable. I respectfully request you continue with your professional attire and let Tarpon shine. Please don't go to look like the other boards of Tarpon Springs. You look at those on your video, I'm not proud of the way they sit up there and look, but they're not elected officials. I appreciate how professional you all look tonight, and I do hope you will respectfully continue that. Thank you, and if you need to turn up the air, I'm sure the citizens will pay a little more for the building air-conditioned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, Commission Members, Senior City Staff, Robert Rockline, seven fifty-five North Lake Boulevard here in Tarpon. Uh, I'd be remiss if I didn't come up and, uh, first thank you for the proclamations that you do do every month for the various, uh, causes and conditions and staff and that. It's, I'm sure they appreciate it. But I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention that this week is National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and, uh, I think that that deserves a mention because we have a great public safety staff here between the two chief Youngs and their respective, uh, positions and their departments, and, uh, the givers, as I like to call them, that serve our city. So, uh, maybe next year, at this time, I think May fifteenth is the actual date, they have the ceremony in Washington, D.C., which I've been to several times. But I've been to more line-of-duty funerals than you have people in But I've been to more line-of-duty funerals than you have people in this room, including everybody. And, uh, that doesn't even include 9/11 where I lost six people that I worked with on a daily basis. So, I think that they deserve the recognition, uh, for the services that they provide and the sacrifices that both they and their families make on a regular basis. Thank you.
Robert, can I, uh, make a comment to you?
Sure.
We actually held a completely separate event.
Right.
For that.
I'm aware of that. I was unable to attend, but.
But you'd want it, you want it here as well.
I think they deserve equal time, more or less.
I just wanted to make sure you knew that we had that.
I, I did, Mayor. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Nita Protus, 901 Bay Shore Drive. I want to thank the lady for coming up, asking y'all to wear your suits and ties. Years ago, I know that Commissioner Banther and, uh, our Commissioner at the end were in the office wind. And when I was Mayor, uh, remember this, all the Commissioners got a navy blue, or if they changed the color, it was green jacket to wear with a city emblem on it. And they were all presented their jackets when they, uh, came onboard. And the St. Pete Times, when we had a daily St. Pete Times, used to always comment on how professional Tarpon Springs elected officials were at their meetings and wherever they went. I think that's something you should consider again. They always spoke very highly of our community and how the men dressed and how professional we were up here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Scott Tucker, 1459 Coburn Drive here in Tarpon Springs. Um, I'm here to talk about water quality issues on our street. For a number of years now, we've had, uh, poor water pressure and also brown water. Last year, I contacted the city and they assured me something would be done. Nothing happened, they never contacted me. April 24th this year, I contacted the city again. Our problem's only getting worse. And if we have run water too fast, we'll get brown water. I tell my wife when I'm taking a shower, don't flush the toilet because I won't have enough water pressure. So, hopefully something can be done because so far, um, I've just seemed to be pushed underneath the rug, nothing has happened, and I would appreciate some type of response from the city. Because like I said, I've contacted them, they have not contacted me back with any kind of resolutions at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Henry Hall from 242 South Beach Drive. Um, I guess I'm going to reiterate what Scott talked about with water pressure. Uh, took us five minutes to fill a two-cup, uh, container, uh, with water. And I've been given the understanding from some people in the Water Department that it's going to take two years or so to start to address things with an engineering plan. I'm wondering, we have two empty lots that are buildable. Um, what can we do about this maybe a little quicker? And is that something that could be brought up at a future Commissioner meeting?
Um, we don't, this isn't a question-answer time, but, um, I'll, if you can grab the city manager's card as you head out, please reach out to him and, and he will, he will respond to you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sasha Braddock. I'm sorry I'm late. Um, I'm experiencing these hearings. I'm here tonight, the last time we put agenda on that, uh, North Florida Avenue Park. So, is, do we speak right now or will we?
No, you, that's, that's on the agenda, so you can speak then.
Right, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else in the audience that?
Hi, David Ballard Geddes Jr. I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. I like to study the Constitution and, and the Declaration of Independence. Um, I find that after rereading the Declaration of Independence a few times, that the Declaration is a real twisted piece of arithmetic. The Declaration of Independence declares that "we are on a long train of usurpations." I don't want to be on that choo-choo train. It declares "to eat us out of our subsistence." It declares "to complete perfidy and works of death scarcely paralleled in the most barbaric of ages and conditions." It declares "that mankind is more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable." Death to the voice of justice and consequency, declaring that legislation is pretentious and is to be protected from the murders that they commit on the inhabitants of these states, further declaring "the absolute destruction of all ages and conditions." I do not want to be aboard that choo-choo train any more than anybody else wants to be aboard a choo-choo train that takes them to perfidy and death. This declaration needs to be withdrawn. It needs to have a second set of eyes put on it. I object. Anyone else?
Good evening, Peter Lakkas, 5014 Ashland Avenue. And, uh, before I begin my reading, I just want to say, what I usually choose to read is from the prophets because I see similarities from then, what was spoken, to what I see now. So, this is Isaiah 58, 6 through 11. "Is not this the kind of fasting I have chosen? To loose the chains of injustice and untie the cords of the yoke? To set the oppressed free and break every yoke? Is it not to share your food with the hungry and to provide the poor wanderer with shelter? When you see the naked, to clothe him, and not to turn away from your own flesh and blood? Then your light will break forth like the dawn and your healing will quickly appear. Then your righteousness will go before you. And the glory of the Lord will be your rear guard. Then you will call and the Lord will answer, and you will cry for help and he will say, 'Here am I.'" If you drew away with the yoke of oppression with a pointing figure and finger and malicious talk, and if you spend yourselves on behalf of the hungry and satisfy the needs of the oppressed, then your light will rise in the darkness and your night will become like the noonday. The Lord will guide you always and he will satisfy your needs in a sun-scorched land. And you will strengthen your frame. You will be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail. So, uh, it's kind of thinking about how we should live our lives and I caught something the attorney said here in his prayer, that decisions should favor the residents. That is your ultimate duty. Budgets, yes, but that was prophetic. And so, I've been gone a couple of weeks and missed meetings, I haven't seen the tapes, but there was a lot of discussion, I guess, about the Forbes property, what to do with it. There's some want to have it go to a developer, another RFP. And there's others, and it appears that it's more of the others that want to keep it as an open space. So, looking at it as value to the city, is one more building there going to make that much difference to drawing people downtown? No. But an open space that was landscaped nicely, you can set up a little stage back there, you can have people, musicians that come down that want to play for, and I know you're worried about the homeless, and that's why I read that passage. And I was in New Orleans for a while, went to the Jazz Fest, and you think you've got a homeless problem? You don't have nothing. We were walking around town and you see them sleeping next to fences and they've got the hypodermic needles. And you walk around, they've got these stations where it says IV thing and they can go and drop the needles off. In fact, one night I was hanging out, listening to some music on a corner, a guy comes around in a little go-kart, picks up a box. I talked to the night clerk I was talking with, he says, oh yeah, they come around and pick up, you know, the stuff. So, we don't have that problem thankfully, but the way we need to deal with the homeless needs to be with grace and compassion. So, as you look to consider what to do with this lot, don't be afraid that it's going to be a homeless shelter. You already got the bathrooms across the street that people worry about, but things can be done to handle that. But we need that open space that can be used more often for the benefit of the city and its residents and actually helping the downtown people. People can get lunches, go sit at some tables with some umbrellas, be nice.
Maggie Miles, 433 East Boy Street, Tarpon Springs. Good evening, Commissioner. Um, I'm here first to thank the city for the crosswalks on MLK. Um, I think, um, Corporal Boone, I think that was his, one of his farewell presents that he gave us. Um, but still, I'm looking to see, um, Belcher Extension open. I hope I see that in my lifetime. Um, if you are a regular, um, driver of US-19 or alternate 19, you know we're currently in construction, um, pandemonium. We got construction on alternate, we got construction on US. Trying to get to downtown Clearwater to work, it takes me about 45 minutes in the morning. I can leave here and go all the way to St. Pete for, in 45 minutes, but it takes me that long because of all the construction projects at the same time going on. We need another northwest, I mean, north-south corridor. Change has to come. I know some people don't want it in their backyard. We didn't want mirrors in our backyard, but we got it and we welcomed it. So, I think it's time to either put it on the ballot for the residents to decide that's what we want and make it happen, but it's a long time overdue for that Belcher Road Extension to come through. We need another north-south corridor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Let's go up to, oh, there's somebody else?
Mr. Saxer.
Please come up.
How do you like my new hat? I actually earned this hat. My name's John Christian Saxer. I have a Swiss name. It's Johannes Christian Von Holen Sax Von Sax. It's, it's Jewish week. My last name Von Sax goes back to somebody named Isaac in the Bible, from Isaac, Von Sax. I've traced my family lineage all the way back to Isaac and Isaac's father, Mel Kisa Deck. I want to make a couple of comments on, uh, issues that are going before the Commission. Uh, one of them's about the jitney. I'll cover that quick. We don't need the jitney in a glass box. We can put it up on the stage, put nice lights on it, and it'll cost less than $500. The stage I'm talking about is a railroad stage. I don't know if we settle that issue or not, but we could save $300,000. The next issue is moving the Safford House. I've lived in the Safford House. Some of my friends have lived in the Safford House. I've been a foreman for a construction company called Tarpon Builders for 20 years. I think I know houses enough to know that that house should not be moved a third time. Um, living there, it's, uh, any spark could set that house on fire. So, I don't recommend we move that thing. I'm not threatening to burn it, I'm just saying that we don't want to move that house because it is brittle and it would fall apart. On the third issue has to do with the stone anchor. I call it, uh, the rock of ages that was removed from, uh, the property that was Sun Bay Motel was on, and I was given direct permission by Mayor Costa to put up a stone circle there. He was elected by the people. And when you're elected by the people, you should have the right to do different things like throw a stone here and there. And these stones are anchors from the fleet of Atlantis. I've become world famous for finding the stones all the way around the, uh, river, uh, the Indian River or the intercoastal waterway, southern Florida, indicating that Florida was an ancient maritime nation in ancient times, between 6,500 and 14,400 years ago. I, I look at the 14,400 date as more realistic. Um, so the reason why I wanted to put a stone circle up was because it would mark the Garden of the Three Hesperides Spring, which is Epiphany Spring in Greek mythology. Uh, that was the first Garden of Eden, thousands and thousands of years before Genesis, written in the Bible. So, by putting up a stone circle at Craig Park, uh, up above Craig Park overlooking Spring Bayou, um, it would be a sign to the nations that we found the spring of life and the evidence for the Garden of the Three Hesperides. By the way, that's how we get the word paradise, Hesperides, paradise, paradise. Um, whereas the Bible doesn't give the entomology of how the world hears the word paradise. It came from Greek mythology. So, there was an agenda. Is that my button?
Yeah.
There was an agenda.
Four minutes.
By the writers of the Bible to change the whole story, so I recommend everybody read.
Excuse me, sir, your four minutes are up. Thank you.
Fine. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope you'll do the right thing about that stone anchor circle. And if you don't want to put that stone anchor circle up, I want that stone, that rock of ages returned to me and I'll, I'll put it where I want it. Thank you very much. Sorry to over time.
Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda tonight? Austin, do we have any Zoom callers?
There are no online comments.
Okay, I think we have one, uh, letter.
Mayor, we did have a, an email to read into the record, but the gentleman did get up and speak this evening.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, uh, that, that'll conclude public comments. We have an, an item that we added, which is, uh, Commission Committee Updates. So, any Commissioner who, um, is a member of any of the, uh, any, um, outside committees of, like, Vice Mayor Eisner and Forward Pinellas, myself at the Tampa Regional Planning Council, I believe Commissioner Koulias is, is the, um, on the, um. The, the homeless. The homeless thing. So, if anybody had any update on, and we're, and this is going to be just a once-a-month agenda, uh, item to just update the residents on anything going on in their respective committees. So, Commissioner, uh, Vice Mayor?
So, I sit on, um, the School Transportation Safety Council, but they meet quarterly, so, uh, we don't have a meeting until, uh, June. But I also sit on Forward Pinellas Board, which is an MPO, which decides, um, on all of the transportation items that go on in Pinellas County, everything from St. Pete up to us being the northernmost, um, Pinellas County city. So, I'm sure you don't want to hear about my three-hour meeting from 1:00 to 4:00. So, what I decided to do was, um, they, they bring up topics and the topics, at least I'm going to speak about, there, there are not many, um, but it's, it's things that pertain to Tarpon Springs, pertain to us. Um, so, one of the things, um, that I had heard was that there's a Forward Pinellas Grant Program. And of course, being a commissioner for three years, I've never heard anybody giving us a grant from there. The only grants that we got were for surveys and things like that. So that was my question. What I got back as a response was that there would be somebody speaking to all the city managers, including our city manager, Charles Redd, will be in the upcoming month or so, having a meeting, and they will be presenting and asking our city manager to give a wish list of what he would like to have as a grant, not to say that we're going to get it, or he's going to get it, or we're going to get it, but at least we'll have a way of being heard. So that was one thing. I also listened to a chart of how reliable, and don't laugh, but how reliable 19, State Road 19 is, as far as in quality. But when I delved into it and started asking questions, they did this survey during COVID, which was the timeframe that nobody was on 19. So I thought it was a useless presentation, and I also made known that I thought it was useless. So what was the sense of discussing it? They gave also a discussion on the quality of 19. So my question to them was, did you ever see any of the on-ramps or the U-turns on 19? They're all turned to gravel. I'm pretty sure everybody up here on this board gets a call from someone thanking them for their broken windshield. We have no juris, we have no control over that. It's a Pinellas County thing. They will be trying to fix it. I asked them if they'd at least put a Band-Aid on it temporarily, just some sort of a seal, because we all hear about that. Another detail that came up was, they, FDOT does a more detailed information by location and available. They inquire about, I wanted to inquire about more updates. Their updates that they give us are not up to snuff. And I really wasn't happy about, they almost give us updates from two years prior. Things changed so drastically that I thought we should be able to get an update as they get the information, rather than giving us an update of the entire 19. So that's another thing that I got to speak about. I also made mention about the safety issues. I'm sure anybody that's driven up and down Tarpin Avenue knows that the bicyclists, the professional bicyclists, don't even think about stopping at Tarpin Avenue. They're buzzing across that at 30 miles an hour, and they just hope that no car hits them. They're not stopping to push the button like the regular people do. We've all been there. We all see it. So I asked them if they would be so kind as to put an inexpensive motion sensor there so that when the bicycle is approaching, it sets off those lights and hopefully then people stop. So they're considering that. There was a condition of bringing beach people to Clearwater so they didn't have to park in the congested area. So one of the requests that I made was also to see if they would be willing to have a bus or some sort of transportation, even if it's a smaller vehicle, to bring our people to either Sunset Beach or to Fred Howard Park. So that's my dealings. Like I said, I tried to take three hours and turn it into five minutes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else that participates on a committee that might-
I'm on the local homeless network in between businesses and some of the organizations, and we have our meetings every other month. And so we just talk about any, if there's any new occurrences or, you know, just ways to communicate with one another as the police department's there. And unfortunately, Boone's not, Officer Boone's not going to be at the next one, and he was great. So that's some big shoes to fill for the moment. But just we're constantly communicating with one another, just understanding different seasons and the amount of people that do come and go, and potentially working with the Shepherd Center for another site somewhere in the future. It's very, varied inception talk. So nothing, no direct details to give at this moment, but once we do come up with something, we'll be sure to, we'll be sure to share it with the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm on the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. This Friday, our sustainability plan is being given an award throughout the entire Tampa Bay area, which includes Hillsborough, Pinellas, Hernando, Pasco, as, and as the number one sustainability plan amongst all municipalities. So I really want to thank our director, Tommy Keiger, and Holly, and all the staff that have worked really hard. And we're going to go down and receive that award. They'll be receiving. I'm going to just tag along. So I'm really excited about that. So thank you. Okay, yeah. Okay, so let's go to the Consent Agenda. We've got Consent Agenda Items 4 through 9. Does any commissioner wish to pull any of the Consent Agenda Items? Okay, so does any, are there any public comments on any of the Consent Agenda Items?
Some people probably don't have these in front of them. They need to hear some of the titles to the consent agenda. They got to hear each item. I see some confused faces in the public. That's why.
All right, I'll read them. Okay, Consent Agenda Item Number 4, Special Events Hippie Fest 2025, 37th Annual Sponge Docks, 4th of July Picnic 2025, Juneteenth Event 2025. Consent Agenda Item Number 5, Satisfaction Release of Leans. Number 6, Authorization to Continue/Discontinue Fluoride in the Water System Immediately. 7, Award File, The Aftermarket Vehicle Parts and Supplies. Number 8, Approve Amendment 3 to File Disaster Debris Removal. And Number 9, Approve Change Order for the Comprehensive Disaster Recovery Management. Okay, are there any public comments on any of those items?
Here to Lax 514 Ashland Avenue, as the lady mentioned, you need to have more professionalism with your attire. You need to stick to the standards in how you read the consent agenda. You're supposed to read it as the mayors previously have done, two on the board. File number 230, you know the routine. You've been on there a while. So I want to talk about Number 6, Authorization to Discontinue Fluoride in the Water Supply. Not a Republican. To me, it's not a Republican and Democrat issue. Thank you. If you go back into the records, when we first put in the water treatment plant, I don't know if Bob's still here, he can confirm it. Paul's not. Robin Sanger and I pushed the effort to not have fluoride in the water. Back then, the county commission was a little more acceptable that they weren't, they were going to not put water in because we were getting ours. But when we put our plant in, we didn't want fluoride in it. Then again, another elected group comes in at the county, they want the fluoride in, then we get another elected group here, they put the fluoride back in. And in the meantime, we've poisoned our children for decades, or at least one decade. So I would recommend you move to immediately discontinue putting the fluoride in. It's sorry that we have an inventory that we'll have to possibly dump and take a loss on, but hopefully that isn't the case. But I would highly recommend we move forward and no longer putting fluoride or any other chemicals. A lot of these people here don't realize, we put in chemicals to coat the pipes so they don't leach the lead. We put in all kinds of sulfuric acid in some of the processes. We need to find a way to get back, we spent, I don't know how much, Mr. Herring can tell you how much is left on the bonds that we borrowed. We spent 20 millions. 15 million was from the Swift Mud. To put in a reverse osmosis plant that puts out good, clean water, and then we turn around and put chemicals in it. So anything we can remove from the water system is a benefit to all of our residents. Thank you.
Any further comments on the Consent Agenda Item?
Sarah Andrews-McWarder, 1611 Seabreeze Drive. I would also like to follow up on the Agenda Number 6 regarding fluoride. I'd like to thank Mayor Kulianos and Commissioners Eisner and PK for taking the time and energy to listen and talk to mothers and to understand our concerns about the toxic chemicals in our water. We are grateful that you acted immediately under the governor's directive to end the use of fluoride. We had hoped this would have been a vote on the city level, since we operate our own facility. However, we will take the removal as a win for our health and for our families. We look forward to working with the city in the future to make healthy changes that'll make a big impact on the health, on the health-conscious moms that reside in the city. This is where the future is going, and to have a strong government behind us is paramount. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you. Any further comments on the Consent Agenda Items? Austin, are there any remote comments?
There are no online comments.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to-
Mayor, we have someone else.
Oh, we do? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Y'all may hate me before, so with Zeb Atkinson, 621 East Warren Street. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board today. I'm speaking to you not just as a concerned resident of Tarpin Springs, but as someone deeply committed to science-based policy and to the health and well-being of our family and community. Today, I urge you to preserve the city practice of community water fluoridization. Regardless of where the political winds blow, the fact remains clear that fluoride in public drinking water is safe practice. Oh, my God. Excuse me. Is a safe, effective, and essential to promoting public health. For over 75 years, fluoride has been one of the most studied and endorsed public health measures in the United States and around the world. The Center for Disease Control has named water fluoridization one of the 10 greatest public health achievements in the 20th century. I don't know why I can't speak today. My Lord. Some facts. A 2021 meta-analysis published in Public Health found that children in fluoridated communities had 35% fewer decayed, missing, or filled teeth. 2013 Australian study in the Journal of Dental Research showed that adults with a lifetime of exposure to fluoridated water had significantly less tooth decay and fewer dental treatments required over their lives. In the United States, it's estimated that $1 invested in water fluoridation saves a community $38 in dental treatment and cost. This is something that helps everyone. It puts the people that don't have the means to get to a dentist at a regular basis with those that do. Unfortunately, the city may have experimented with discontinuing fluoride, often due to misinformation, political pressures, or budgetary confusion. The results are remarkable, are remarkably consistent. Calgary, Canada, 2011, a study was published in the Community Dentistry, and in 2016, it was published in Oral Epidonology, found that within three years of halting fluoride in the water, Calgary experienced a sharp and statistically significant increase in childhood tooth decay. In Juneau, Alaska, 2007, the study was done in 2018, it found that noticeable rise in dental treatments, including crowns and extractions for children following fluoride removal. Even in Pinellas County in 2011, the study was done in 2013, where they took the fluoride out, there was such an outcry that they put the fluoride back in. And that was, you know, in this county. Addressing the anti-fluoride narrative, the opponents of fluoride often cite cherry-pick studies or long debunked claims. One concern is that the FDA is removing indigestible fluoride supplements, such as tablets and drops, from the market. But the move is unrelated to water, fluoride in the water. Dr. Ladapo, who is our state surgeon general, has repeatedly undermined scientific-based public health policies, not only with regard to fluoride, but also his positions on COVID-19 vaccinations, masking, and general disease control. His skepticism of fluoride is not rooted in science, but rather aligned with the fringe conspiratorial rhetoric that, didn't finish. Okay. In the end, please keep the fluoride in. It helps communities. And there's scientific research that shows when you take it out, bad things happen.
Okay. Can I hear a motion to accept the Consent Agenda Items 4 through 8?
Second.
Okay, so with a motion on the floor, I'm going to go to comments. I'll go first. First of all, is there a problem? The governor signed a bill mandating that we eliminate the use of fluoride in the state of Florida. It's, that bill, that bill is effective July 1st. Our Agenda Item here is to go ahead and just discontinue it effectively now. As soon as we vote on this, the city manager will take the steps to eliminate the use of fluoride immediately. So that's what we're voting on. So just for the general public's knowledge, the, again, it's been mandated by the, by the state legislature. Commissioner Banther, do you have any comments?
Yes, I just want to overall comment. I did receive a call from one of the ladies, and she was very aggressive on the phone with me, referenced my children, and then, and then testosterone levels. I have a long history of listening to people up here that I don't agree with. That is my job as your commissioner. And I do support this item tonight. I don't believe you should be forced to have fluoride inside your water. But I recommend, and this includes public comment as well, you know, put yourselves in our shoes, and put yourselves, we have daily lives, just like you do, work, families, and responsibilities. Everyone up here is here to help you. But please come with us in a respectful tone, and one that is going to prompt us to listen to you. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I too have always leaned toward not putting it in. Twenty years ago, there was research, more, more of the research was in favor of putting fluoride in the water. We have new studies done around the world now, actually, that show that that may not be the best thing. The other issue is, is the right to choose. And I just want all of you to want fluoride to know that it's in your toothpaste, it's in your mouthwash, and you can talk to your dentist. I mean, it's not being close to you, but it is being taken out for people that do not see the need to do that. And as already stated, it is the law now in Florida. So it is time to move on this issue, but I would repeat that it is available to you at the local store, grocery store, and drugstores as far as toothpaste and mouthwash. And talk to your dentists.
Thank you.
But those of you who don't want it, don't have to take it anymore.
Commissioner Kulias?
I have no comment.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
I definitely have a comment. So earlier, it was said that there is, this is not a political, Republican, Democratic thing, and I agree. But what I have found in speaking to residents, anybody that is pro- But what I have found in speaking to residents, anybody that is pro-fluoride, you cannot convince that it is not good. And anybody that you, that you speak to that is against, you're not converting the other way around. So, it is very similar to politics, just not with a political ideology. You know, I've read probably almost every single type of report, and it just depends who's writing the report. Um, it depends the tests that they, that you take, and, and how they um, you know, determine the tests. Um, you never know if the tests are tainted to keep the scientists in, in, in check. So, I mean, the bottom line is, this is the only medicine that is being inflicted into people that don't want it. We shouldn't be allowed, nobody should be allowed to say you have to take this. Um, it should always be up to the person. So, i- if there's so many things, soft drinks come with fluoride in it, toothpaste comes with fluoride, as was said earlier from Commissioner Donato. If you go to the dentist, they can give you a fluoride treatment. It, it's not an expensive thing on a small basis, but if you don't want to um, if you feel that this could be causing you harm, which they cannot rule out, you shouldn't have to bathe in it and swim in it and drink it and wash your clothes in it and all the other things. So, I, I am for having this removed, and the people that want it and feel it's beneficial, you can still have it. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, with no further comment, can I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianus?
Yes. Okay, so let's go to our business items. Uh, business item number one, discussion and appointment of Board of Commissioner Represent- Representation to the General Employee Pension Board. Um, let me start this off. So, I, I serve on that, that board currently. I'm not adverse, uh, opposed to staying there, but we do have a commissioner who has far more specialty in uh, in employee matters and uh, human resources. So, Commissioner Kulias, would, would you like to sit on that board?
I would ask if Commissioner DiDonato would like to sit on the board.
Sure, I'll, I'll do whatever I can to help.
All right. Can I entertain a motion?
Motion to appoint Commissioner DiDonato to the Employee Pension Board.
Second.
Is there any further comment on the board regarding this?
Thank you, thank, thank you, Frank. Appreciate it.
Uh, any public comments on this item? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes. Not comfortable voting for himself.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianus?
Yes. That was a good move, PK. He's got a year, so. All right. Number ten, appointments to Planning and Zoning Board. City Clerk, can you uh, lead us in that item?
I thought that was-
No, no. We're, we're at uh-
We are?
We're at thirteen.
We deferred eleven and uh-
We deferred eleven and twelve.
We didn't defer ten, did we?
You're, you're just-
Oh, ten and eleven, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Just did ten. You can't go off the paper. That's the issue. You gotta go off the computer.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. So uh, so let's go to appointment, appointments to the Budget Advisory Committee.
No, no. Board of Adjustments.
Item thirteen.
Which ones did we?
Thirteen.
Item thirteen.
Oh, this is the old. I'm sorry, folks. All right. I'm working with the agenda that was given to me on Friday, not this one. Okay, I, I apologize. So, let's go to number thirteen. Appointments to the Board of Adjustments. City Clerk, can you lead us in this item?
Yes, we have received a recommendation from the Board of Adjustments through the Planning Department to move the current alternates one and two to fill the two vacant regular member positions. So, what we're asking the board tonight is to move Robert Wood, alternate one, and Carl Fuch, alternate two, to the two vacant positions, which terms will expire October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. We are also recommending that the appointments of alternate one and two, if you move the others up, uh, would not happen this evening. I just wanted to bring to your attention the two applicants that we have budgeted, uh, the Board of Adjustments was their second choice. Therefore, the code enforcement position is, is the one person's first choice, and the Planning and Zoning Board, that would, those would be coming up at the next meeting where we need regular members. So, if we place these two people as alternates, um, then it would prevent them from serving as members that we need in those positions.
So, would any commissioner like to make a motion on this? And then, we can have discussion. Any commissioner want to make a motion on this?
We were worried about the planning and zoning that's coming at the next meeting. Well, just Board Action to move Robert Wood, alternate one, and Carl Fuch, alternate two, and to move vacant positions, these terms expire October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, and appoint.
We'll hold off on the alternate.
And we hold off on them, okay?
Yes.
Do I have a second? End of the motion.
Second.
Uh, let's go to, let's go to board discussion first, and then we'll go to public comment. Commissioner Banther?
Uh, yes, so we're not voting on the two alternates, correct?
That is correct. We could always bring those back if he should not get appointed.
All right. There, there is an individual on here I cannot support, but it's not one of the ones of the alternates, so I'm good with this, as is.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Well, we're moving to move the, the, the current alternates forward, and I'll support that, yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
No comment.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
No comment.
Okay, there, um, is there any public comment? With no public comment, uh, Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay. Uh, roll call, please?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianus?
Yes. Okay, uh, appointment to the Budget Advisory Committee.
Mayor Commissioners, um, Ms. Howard has submitted her resignation as her residence is no longer in Tarpon Springs. This leaves four vacancies on the committee, two regular member positions, and two alternate positions. At this time, we have two applicants uh, for the committee. So, we are asking to appoint uh, the members, the applicants listed as regular members. These terms would expire March seventeenth of twenty-twenty-eight.
Okay. Can we, uh, can a commissioner please make a motion on this?
I make a motion to appoint Debbie McKinney and Michael Somarkas as regular members.
Second.
Okay, is there any, um, commissioner comments?
I just want to include that in the motion, these terms would expire March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Thank you. Commissioner Banther?
No comments.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No comments.
Commissioner Kulias?
No comments.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
No comments.
Is there any public comment? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay, roll call, please?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianus?
Yes. Okay, number fifteen, uh, appointments to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board.
Currently, there are two vacancies on this board. One is due to the resignation of Mr. Klayan, and one being termed out, which was Ms. Lambrianis. We are asking the board to appoint the two applicants listed as regular members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Can I entertain a motion?
Sir Move?
No, I need a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Lisa George and Stacy Ernst as regular members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Second.
Is, uh, let's go to uh, commissioner comments. Commissioner Banther?
No comments.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No comments.
Commissioner Kulias?
No comments.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
No.
Is there any public comments? Austin?
There are no public comments online.
Roll call, please?
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Kulianus?
Yes. Okay, so, uh, the next item, number sixteen, discussion and direction on Little, and quote, uh, Channel Park. I'm gonna defer this one to our s- city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This issue came up, uh, the last meeting, and some residents, they had spoken to me prior to that, had a request. There's a small park, which essentially is the, the right-of-way where it meets the river, North Florida Avenue. And uh, um, the park has two, uh, I'll say parking bumpers there. It's a very small space with a drainage ditch on the left side. There's a bench and a trash can, uh, and then there's signs like no swimming, no fishing, and so forth. But all those rules are, are, uh, the residents contend are continually violated, and the park's not, um, well-maintained, and they have to do a lot of calls for service and so forth. So, they've asked to, to come express their concerns tonight. Um, the staff has been working, um, police departments have been putting a camera on site so we can watch it more closely, and increasing our kind of attention to that park in terms of maintenance and, and upkeep, hoping that can alleviate some of the concerns. But tonight was the opportunity for them to be heard, and for you all to give us some direction. Our comprehensive plan talks about not eliminating, um, access to the water, access points to the water, uh, so we don't recommend vacating the, the site. And we feel putting a fence up, just fencing it off, everyone would just hop the fence, we think, and continue with the activity. So, uh, what we're doing now is increasing our attention, uh, through a camera and through, and we're gonna increase the maintenance and so forth, see if that alleviates it, but, but we, we're looking for more, any more direction the board may have for us tonight.
So, let's go through, uh, board comments first. Commissioner Banther?
Yes, um, I have some concerns about this park, um, and I'm anxious to hear what my colleagues think, and more from staff if applicable. And I, and I fully respect that in our comprehensive plan or what have you, we're not to vacate, you know, parks, and obvi- and just saying that sounds ridiculous, right? But we also have to use common sense. You know, how, how, how far are we gonna have to go where it's like a jail there? We got cameras, we got gates, you can't fish, you can't swim. So, maybe at one time, when this was less developed, I, 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 I grew up a few blocks from here, but I just can't recall. You know, maybe this was more appropriate. It might not be appropriate anymore. And I don't think saying that is, and is, I'm not saying that's my position tonight, that's where I'm leaning, but in my, i- in my opinion, we shouldn't just say, well, let's not vacate because that's what our comprehensive plan calls for. We have to apply common sense. And um, I, I, I don't really see any longer, unless I hear differently tonight, what the purpose of this park is. Now, vacating it where it goes, what it does, all that needs to be decided, but I think the residents have valid concerns, the fact you can't even fish there, swim there, I mean, you're, you're going at the end of a residential street to sit and, and just look at water. So, I don't know, I, I'm, 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 I am definitely leaning towards, um, exploring alternatives to, uh, you know, vacate this, this, a little park here. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Well, I have to know, this has been a problem for a long, long time. The residents there have, have dealt with people who don't, who don't seem to respect the park like, like a park, so to speak, but uh, at times, not always. For those of you that haven't been all the way down, basically what it is, is the end of a road, and, and then the water. And there's a house to the west of it and to the east of it, and it's basically, it's, to me, I would support Mr. Banther's position to look at. I know it is part of the comp plan, and I understand, but I don't even know what the square footage of that park is, but it's not very big. Yeah, it's really, really small. And I would consider looking at something along that line, or I don't know that a boat ramp really is gonna be that good there because there's the island out there and whatnot. So, I, I, I just really think maybe legally we need to look at the comp plan and, and decide whether or not vacating it makes more sense. I, I, I don't know what the residents feel, I would be interested in hearing that from them as well, but it has indeed been a problem. It's, it's even a problem for people that live up and down in that area trying to get to their dock with their boats because the fishing line is in the water, and some of the fishermen get upset with the voters, and the voters get upset with the fishermen. And I, I just think we need to consider whether or not that indeed should be a park.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yeah, uh, growing up as a kid, we used to, you know, go into the water, jump across, uh, jump, you know, go to the island over there, and there was a, a rope that we would swing across and, and enjoy ourselves, but it didn't have a fence, it wasn't improved to look like a park. It was, you know, we would pull up on our bikes and, and swim, but none of the stuff that we're hearing now that's happening, um, you know, there's a, there's a few issues that, and I understand the, the, the residents of that neighborhood, you know, it's, seems like it's becoming more, more of a hangout with not the, the best activities happening, you know? And so, um, this isn't gonna hurt us as a board or, or as a community if we were to remove this park, you know, part of our comp plan. That's, if, as Commissioner Banther stated, there's few things there that, barely nothing you can do but sit there, and, you know, and sit on the bench. So, um, I'd be interested in removing it all, maybe just in improving the, the roundabout to make people drive off and drive around, but if this board doesn't want to go that route and completely remove the park, because we'll have other chances for parks in the future, and, you know, we got a lot of waterway, too, so we'll figure something out. Then, you gotta at least keep the, the, the camera out there, and, you know, but, you know, I think that road needs to just be a roundabout, needs to get, not a roundabout, but just a cul-de-sac, that way they can turn back around and move that. That shouldn't be a, a hangout, and it was never, but it, the problem is, it's improved now where it looks like it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, I gave this quite a bit of thought, and I will just tell you that everything that's been said is all true. I agree with Commissioner Banther's comments, I agree with Commissioner Donato, I agree also with, um, I, I, I just will say this, how's this? What we haven't tried yet is to put the camera there, and to also put up a sign that says trespassing, um, after certain hours, and, and put a fine attached. And that would give the opportunity to see if that could work prior to pulling the cord, you know? We can always do that. We can always pull the cord. I've spoken to residents on both sides, I know exactly what has been going on. It's disrespectful, they're throwing beer bottles, they're partying to all hours of the night, but you know, that can be done at Fred Howard Park, um, that can be done at Sunset Beach, um, that's why we have a police force, people put in a call, and if you don't have the sign stating what is legal and what is not legal, the police have no way of correcting the problem. I've been there numerous times on my bicycle, on my, in my car. It, it is, you know, I, I wouldn't be offended if we remove this park, uh, even though it does break our, um, parks' rules and regulations for our comp plan. But at the same time, it also is a venue for older folks to be able to utilize it during the day. I don't know, and I'd like to find out if some of the issues are what's going on during the day, because usually what happens is the issues happen in the evening when the rambunctious ones start. It's like, uh, Halloween, you turn into a pumpkin. So, I, I would like to take the baby step first, and at least put a sign up, put rules and regulations, and if the, you know, if we see something, or if the police see- And if the, you know, if we see something or if the police see something and we make a call, we can actually utilize, uh, the police force to reprimand or possibly whatever, depending on what they do. Um, they could even be locked up or fined. And then if that doesn't work, we always have the option to pull it. I just don't wanna start with the pulling, right, right yet. That's all.
Thank you. Um, let's, let's hear from the public, and then I wanna come back to the city manager and, and see if he has what his recommendation is on, on this. So, are there any public comments regarding this item?
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Sasha Broddick. I live, uh, on the end of the street, house on the right. I am probably the most affected one by this park. Um, the, I wanna recognize the council, the mayor, and the chief of police. You guys are really doing a great job. Been twenty years in this, uh, city and what improvement. I really do applaud you in that. I do wanna bring some, uh, uh, details because, um, the last four houses on this, you know, park are most affected. And, uh, the other houses, not as much, but in a sense, they are a little bit. So I, I wrote a couple notes, just kinda tell you what we are dealing with it, and maybe they can bring something, uh, a little bit more clarity to your decision-making. Um, the other neighbor, Craig, um, on the other side, Lucas, he's not as positive as I am. He's selling his house, he's moving out. He said he's been dealing with this park and the city for years with zero solution. And he doesn't have a trust in you guys. And he literally is selling his house. Um, I don't know what new resident will do, but they will have to be a little rude awakening when they move in. Uh, so I'm here to represent me and, uh, the other neighbor next to me, Conrad Cash. He's, um, unable to attend this meeting, but he sent some notes via me. So, um, first thing and most important for me is my family's safety. There is zero easement. My driveway, park. You can park two cars if you, more people come and you have to, you know, park another car behind it. I cannot leave my driveway. Little inconvenience, but it gets old. After a while, especially if you're in a rush. But what scared me the most, I have three kids, I have two daughters. They're coming home late at night and there are people sitting on the bench, and they will park. And when they exit their car, they're as far as you and me. And it's pitch black, there's no lights there. And, you know, they're young girls, they get scared. Um, so there is a safety issue there. Uh, we have not have alteration with us, but there have been alteration inside of the park. Few years back, we used to call police and, um, I have nothing but respect police. But let's be really honest, police come here, tell them, "Leave." They leave and, and that's it. But I've been living there now five years and my office is looking at the park. Um, I don't know, I, hard to catch. There's so many hundreds and hundreds of different people coming in. So in, in order to enforce it, it might take years to cover everybody who comes to that park. Um, the, uh, for the, another commissioner, there is a lot of signs there. I believe there is a sign, "It's illegal to do all of that." There's so many signs, more than on Trump rally. Nobody reads them. Literally, everything, the sign is from the eight feet high to the floor, listing one, nobody reads that. I'm sorry, but that's a fact, that's a truth. Um, it, maybe if we put a little bit bigger sign and a little enforcement, might deter some people. But again, to cover all of them, the board spreads around, might be too, um, too long. Uh, other things that we are dealing with in, uh, during the mullet season, a lot of local, uh, fishermen, the net fishermen, come there and they catch a mullet. And if you guys know, you know, if you grew up mullet fishing, you gotta empty your net, you empty it right on the grass there. All the biteheads there, there, and it's quite a bit of a smell. City tried to clean it, they come, you know, every few days a week. But the park is size of the garbage truck. If you park the garbage truck in the park, there's no even a foot on each side. It's that small. Um, the, I, because I'm closest one, am I limited by time?
Yes.
Oh, crap. Go quickly. Trespassing, people, you know, going to my property all the time to wash their hands after fishing, everything. Uh, kids are dropping kayaks and there's no launch there. But, you know, that's fine, it doesn't bother me. What it does bother me, I did find out in medical field. I found out diapers, hypodermic needles, you know, rolled-up joints there. If one of our neighborhood kids gets stung by the hypodermic needle because they're there barefooted, they wanna swim, they wanna go across the swing bar. And it's still there.
Really?
It is still there. I got in trouble there because Fish and Wildlife came to me, it says, "I put it there." It says, "That park, that little island is actually protected area." If one of the kids gets stung by the needle and gets some horrible disease, that is really city responsibility. Um, the after, there's a sign, you cannot be there after dark, but there's always after dark. A theft on my house, I cannot keep garage door open. My power tool be missing. It's literally from me to the gentleman to get in my garage. It's not that far. Um, and, uh, we, we do appreciate police, they do come. Uh, but there's no solution. People leave and then we, I feel bad by wasting their time for such a minor call. And, uh, and we stopped calling police, we stopped calling for them. And I, we, I, my, my job is not to enforce it because our neighbors, both guys got, cars got keyed. I don't want my car to be keyed. Because people know if police showed up, that me or the neighbor called in.
Yeah.
So that's all I can say. Thank you for your hard work, appreciate it. Um, and if, whatever your decision is, I would really, really suggest to involve the immediate neighbors. People urinate there all the time, there's no bathrooms. They expose themselves to me and my partner while they're urinating because my office is where the light is. And please don't put body house there, they will stink so bad. That's not a solution.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Jane Harrington, ten twenty-one Jamaica Way. Um, I feel bad for the people who live there, if that's what's going on. I walk in this town. I walk from my house to, out to the beach at Fred Howard. I go to Sunset. But my trail is, I go to Sunset, then I walk all the way out to Howard, and then I come back, and then I walk all the way to the end of South Florida. And I love to sit there, look over the little wall. And it is a very little park. Now, I don't think you could reach out from that bench and touch anybody's house. But during, I don't go at night. And I appreciate Commissioner Eisner's suggestion. Look at when the problem is, and look at what the problem is, and how often the problem is. But to take that park away, and I'm not the only older person that goes during the day and walks and sits there. It is very peaceful, and it's a very nice part of Tarpon at the end of the road. If you take that away as a walker, I have nowhere to sit or stop except walk all the way back, walk all the way out to Fred Howard or keep going back to Sunset and then back to my house. There's very, very few places with park benches or anywhere to stop. Mayor, you're a runner, you're a walker, you know that. They close off the fence in different areas. So, I think there's two sides to everything, but I appreciate the idea, go slow and figure out how you stop it. Because you can take that park away and make it a roundabout, and those kids are still gonna see that end of that road and jump off. And if other people in the neighborhood do that, why wouldn't a kid do that? So, I do think there are solutions that all of you wise people can figure out. And I like the idea of trying it. And maybe you do something and put a guard there at night. But please don't take everything away from people during the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
All right, good evening. Uh, my name's Michael Smarkos. I live at twelve forty-nine North Florida Avenue, uh, exactly four houses away from, uh, the park. I can, uh, corroborate everything that Sasha said about what happens at the park. If you wanna keep the park, the park's an eyesore. Eyesores collect other eyesores. So, nobody's taken care of that park for years, as far as the city goes. I can tell you that one hundred percent because I walk my dog there every day. Uh, I appreciate the lady that goes there and sits. I know there's other people that go there and sit and try and enjoy the park. But you can enjoy something that is in the condition that the park is in currently. As Sasha said, the park is fifty square feet, maybe? I would like to, you know, I guess I have to thank, right, as a member of the budget committee now, uh, and, and the budget advisory board or, or, you know, thinking about how the city spends their money. Uh, if we focus on what it's gonna take to upkeep fifty square feet at the end of a dead-end street, at the far end of Florida Avenue, uh, and, and think of all of the resources and the costs, uh, that we've talked about. Cameras, uh, maintenance, police, landscaping, please. Uh, any of those things, it just doesn't seem like we're getting a good bang for the buck. Uh, that's my two cents, uh, on the park. Uh, thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
David Ballard Gettis Jr., I live down by Pop Stansel Park, and we had a similar issue where there was vandalism and stuff at nighttime at the park. The sheriff came through and they put little cameras up there. But the cameras actually spoke, um, to people that were walking by after hours. And, and the camera said something similar to, "You're on camera." This is, uh, um, "The park is closed currently. You're trespassing, remove yourself from the property." Um, maybe an initial step in that direction, uh, would help. Um, and, uh, nighttime activity would cease. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Nita Protus, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. I don't know if y'all can answer it, maybe Ms. Vincent can. Is that a contributing park in our plan? If it's not, then you don't lose anything. If it is, make sure it doesn't affect the city in any way in our comprehensive plan. Do any of you know that? Can Ms. Vincent answer that? May she answer that? So we'll know before the vote comes. Is it a contributing park?
City manager will address that when he comments, okay?
Is it?
I, I'll let the city manager address that when he com- when he comments.
Oh, all right, because I may wanna ask him a question if he says yes or no. Because we've worked many years on that plan. And I know how important it is to the city.
Coming up. Mayor, you know how this works.
Yes, I do know how it works very well.
It's a comment thing.
And, and it's, I'm making a comment with a question, sir.
Well, the-
Point of order. Is it a contributing, is it a contributing, is it a contributing factor in our comprehensive plan on parks?
Go ahead, Renee, talk. Listen, she's the mayor, we'll give her some deference to-
No, I'm not the mayor anymore.
Well, you, you-
Long time ago.
You're not following procedure, but go ahead.
All right, you have it too.
All right, would you please stop and let her talk?
I will.
All right.
So, the way that, that, that the right-of-way is acknowledged is, it's identified, we have to identify in our comprehensive plan access points to the water, where the public has access. And this is one of the dental, this is identified, um, in an inventory as a public access point. Whether it's, you know, you use the term, uh, contributing. I, I, that's not really a term that comes to mind, it's, in this instance. So, but it is identified as a, as a water access point. Um, and we do have a very specific policies in the comp plan that have been there since at least nineteen ninety about not vacating rights-of-way that provide access or vista to the water. So, I don't know, and I would defer to the city attorney as to, can we control those in other ways? That's a different question altogether. So, um, the, the, the code and the comprehensive plan really speak to actually vacating the right-of-way, in which case, if you do that, then the right-of-way goes to the adjoining property owners, so.
Thank you, okay.
And that's what I wanted to bring out, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Because I know it goes to each side of the property owner. And if it is, we've got to be very cautious what we do. But these people pay big, big bucks in taxes. They live on the water, and they should be protected also.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question.
No, I'm gonna go down.
Well, whenever you-
Yeah, when we get, when we get back to us. Austin?
There are two online comments.
Okay.
Callers, when I unmute you, please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, border commissioners, Juliana Day, four thirteen East Walker Street, Topon Springs. Um, I'm listening to the comments about the park. There's, uh, I like banner, um, banter, um, comment, a purpose. What is the purpose of the park? And some purpose I'm looking at is, maybe we can change it to a dog park. Okay? Um, if we have to remove the bench because of the cause of people sitting there doing things unseemly, uh, more lighting, more light, motion lights to go at the park. And also sched- more scheduled drive-by. Because if the kids know that the police officers are not coming by at a certain time, then they will not be there. If there's not, they don't know that they're coming, then it, it'll be a park where they don't wanna be at because they never know when the police officer will show up. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Austin, you said you had two?
Caller, please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, Peter Delakis, five one four Ashland Avenue. Uh, I keep hearing this dismissal of the comp plan. Over the years, commissions, and y'all have been on revisions of comp plan, it's to protect for future generations. If you check with Renee, as she stated, this is specifically in the comp plan from nineteen ninety. But I had questioned her, and you can maybe ask her herself, that this park was already plotted years before that. And the fact there doesn't appear to be any records, uh, of when this actually occurred as being designated. But if you look on Google, it does show that as Little Anquo River Channel Park. Now, as far as the residents, I completely, uh, concerns you're valid. Uh, a street light could be put up that goes on in the evening at dusk and goes off at sundown. Now, you have patrol officers that through the evening patrol downtown and other areas of town. That could be added as a stop by one or two stops during the evening and at the late night to deter any further actions. And I would also encourage the residents that if there is issues going on, that they do call the police so that can be handled. However, this is to be looked at as who came first. The park was there. These houses that these two people live in were built in nineteen eighty-six. So as the Realtor in me says, "Buyer beware, you know where you're buying into." This happened down in Denidin where they had music and places going on. And they put in a big condo building across the street from the Denidin Brewery. And then people came later and complained about the noise. So, you have to look at what came first and those who came afterwards. You need to find a way to solve their problems, but a light and some additional coverage by your police officers. And, uh, the camera aspect works because I've seen that happen myself and with the sheriff's office. We were out at Brooker Creek area and we were out parked in an area down a dirt road. And sheriff showed up and he says, "Well, we saw you on the camera, you can't be here after night." And we said, "Thank you, we'll leave," we did. So there are ways to handle the issues without having to go and vacate a vista or a piece of land that is entitled to the citizens to use and open it up more so people maybe can swim or drop a kayak off there. That'd be a great place to drop a kayak. And as for the lady suggesting a dog park, the gentleman earlier said he already walks his dog there. Uh, if you had a dog park, you have more cars coming down there.
Peter, you only get two minutes on calls. Okay, so any further, there's nobody else upstairs? Um, let's-
There are no more online comments.
Thank you. City manager?
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to suggest a couple things. Uh, because there is a long history on this piece. And, and in fact, I was even surprised when we went through with the comp plan and that was named as a park. plan and that was named as a park. So, it has been around. Um, I'm not, I don't, I, I'm not comfortable taking parks away. It just doesn't look like a park. It's not maintained as well as it should be perhaps. Uh, maybe there, we should look in to see what we can do to improve it. And definitely from the complaints that I remember getting and have actually gotten fairly recent, um, on that piece of, uh, property, it, it may be curbing night activity there totally might help. But then again, I would go to the police department and say, let's, let's get a history of, of how many calls you've actually had, the history of how, how you would suggest that we handle it legally. Uh, signs are certainly one of them, uh, but again, if people don't read them, they're not much value. Um, I, I, it, it is a problem for the people that live there. It, it, it really is. In fact, I looked at a house on, on the end of that street one time and a neighbor came out and told me about all the trouble and I took it off my list, quite frankly. Uh, so I, 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 I understand what these people are going through. It is abused many, many times, uh, but it seems to be more at night than, than other times. So, I mean, let's, let's get a little bit more factual information is what I'm saying, or suggestions on, on what we can do to save it if, if we can.
All right, let's, uh, let's hear from the city manager. I think he has some ideas that he wants to share with us.
Well, I, I really wanted to hear tonight, so if there was some consensus of we definitely want to save it or we definitely don't. Um, and so I've, I've heard, I've heard both, actually, uh, that maybe we don't need it. I believe there would be a process. Um, Renee, would we have to amend the comprehensive plan to, there'd be some steps. But I, but I do think we could significantly step up the maintenance, maybe lighting, cameras, things that have been suggested tonight as a potential first step. If you find that doesn't solve the problem, I, I believe there'll be a process, we can't just, um, vaca- can you talk about that briefly, Renee?
So, the comprehensive plan itself is a, is a policy document and you administer the policy, but we also have land development code, uh, regulations when you process to vacate or, you know, a right of way that it basically says, don't. So, for, it provides an access or vista to the water. So, I'll defer to the city attorney as to whether or not we would, you know, you know, it's still a, an act that the, you know, it's a, it's an ordinance that the board would have to adopt to vacate the right of way and taking into consideration everything. I don't know that, you know, even though there's a regulation there that it absolutely prohibits you from vacating it, but it is a very strong. I, I guess the real, the, you know, at the end of the day, you know, would you get a challenge? And that's, you know, again, I'll defer to the city attorney on the legalese of, of that, so.
So, city attorney, uh, do we need to make a motion to give direction?
Not, not make a motion, I think we could just, uh, get direction from the board as to how you want us to proceed, whether you want us to look into making changes to the comp plan, um, the ordinance necessary, whether you want security, more security, whatever direction you want to give the city manager and staff, that we don't need a motion.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yeah, a, a, a minimum, the, the camera needs to be installed and, um, but we need to come back and revisit this in six months and see if this camera's being effective or not, or, or, or something. And if the residents of that area, I sort of hate to draw more work, but you know, if you, you see stuff that doesn't make sense for the park over there, you know, report it. And that way we got the camera, we can start monitoring this stuff and, and go from there and build something if that's the case. And, uh, you know, I guess it's been a, a park for so long, but you know, as we talked about, if you can't swim there, you can't fish, you can't, does it really have public access to the waterway?
It's a vista, I believe it's.
So, I do want to correct, there's no sign out there about fishing.
Okay.
You can fish. It says no swimming and a few other things, but fishing is not one of them, so people can fish there. Um, and I, I guess the other, oh, no, don't worry about it.
Renee, hypothetical, if we put a couple benches spread out around Witcomb Bayou, isn't that technically some access to waterway and creating a little bit more for people to, to rest along their walking routes or something? Even if, you know, the water comes up a little bit, but it's just a bench.
Sure. I don't know what, I mean, I, I think, you know, you're, you're talking about just unrelated locations. I mean, you know, so, you know, I, I just, if, if you try these additional things, if you continue to have problems, you know, I think the city manager is committed to finding a solution.
Sure.
And I, you know, I think we could work with the city attorney to find a way to, you know, limit access. I would like to do it without vacating the right of way.
Sure.
But, um, you also have general public health, safety and welfare that, you know, as a consideration perhaps. So, I'd like to work with the city attorney on the right way to do that if that's where we end up.
Well, I would say minimum the camera and the, the residents, they just do some monitoring and, you know, as they report stuff, uh, it'll be on record with video if needed and, and we come back and visit, uh, six months after the camera's been installed to see what the results of it are.
I think that's reasonable. Why don't we, um, city manager, why don't you, you've absorbed all this information? One, one second now, I'll, I'll call you. You've absorbed all this information, uh, why don't you work with the city attorney, um, even, you know, have some conversation with the residents and come up, come back with a strategy as to how you want to affect this, uh, this problem?
Okay, understood.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, I, I've heard everything that the people have said and, uh, what was said up here, everything makes sense. Um, but there's a number of things that has changed. We've had to put a sign, uh, or should have put a sign up at Riverside Park when we put plastic, uh, you know, no bicycle riding, no skidding with skates. We've had to put signs, no climbing on the tree, no sitting on the tree. Um, people these days seem to feel they're entitled to do a lot of the things that a normal person would say, maybe I shouldn't do that. Um, so I'm not adverse to, even though I know I've heard there's a number of signs up there, I want to tailor a sign that is foolproof for anybody that does things wrong. Um, where just period, you cannot be there at night. It closes like every other park closes, because if we tried to block off the park, there's always a way of climbing, I, I've seen the fences there, you could climb into the person's fence and go around it. So, I don't know if that's going to be an idea, you're going to get, um, people to, um, trespass on people's property just to get around the fence. Again, I'm not adverse to removing this, um, park, but we have a situation where it would, it hurts our camp, comp plan, it, it's against our comp plan. It has, uh, adverse effects in every which way, shape and form. Um, but I've sat on a number of boards, you know, over the years, nine years per se, and I have not, the technology has changed so drastically and we haven't extinguished all of the different types of technology that's, you know, that's been given to us. We could easily put a solar camera up there, so we don't have, need electricity, um, and, and be able to film what's going on and see, you know, if we have an issue, um, we, we have to do, we have to issue summonses. Well, I wouldn't be issued a summons, um, but, you know, we could try this first to see, because I do feel for the residents of what they're going through, I don't want that to be, but there are also the rights of the people that need to or want to use this to sit in. What we don't want is we want to restrict the people that are going there to party and cause havoc and, you know, just hoop it up for the evening. So, we, we don't allow people in Sunset Beach, we don't allow in any of the parks at night. So, this should be just one more park that we don't allow at night. Enforcement is something, um, I heard, you know, somebody explained about the expenses of cleaning up the park. We have expenses about cleaning up every park. Um, that's just part of the course of running a city. Um, but, you know, we do maybe have to look into this and I like what Commissioner Kulyas said about revisiting this in a short period of time and seeing if it works, uh, fine. If not, then we take a different venue and see how we handle this.
Let's let the city manager, uh, absorb all this, uh, and to, uh, come back with his suggestions and I think you, I think you've taken in enough to have some direction, so.
Yes, thank you.
All right, uh, does anyone want to take a five minute break before we get into all the ordinances? Everybody, everybody good?
I'm good.
Everybody good? All right.
Do you want a break?
No, I'm, okay. I, I got this, I could call for a break, but.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thanks for thinking about me, PK. Okay, so, uh, ordinances, resolutions, uh, number seventeen, resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-seven, ratification of executive orders, extending that, the declaration of the state of emergency for Tarpon Springs due to Hurricane Helene. If, we don't need to have any conversation on this, can we go? Oh, I'm sorry, you gotta read your thing, I'm sorry.
Resolution twenty twenty five thirty-seven, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying executive order twenty twenty five thirty-four, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to May sixth, twenty twenty-five, and ratifying executive order twenty twenty five thirty-six, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Can I hear a motion to, um, approve resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-seven?
Second.
Okay, if there's no conversation on that item, can we go to roll call?
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, item eighteen, resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-eight, um, city attorney, would you read that?
Resolution twenty twenty five thirty-eight, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, ratifying executive order twenty twenty five thirty-five, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to May sixth, twenty twenty-five, and ratifying executive order twenty twenty five thirty-seven, extending the declaration of local state of emergency to May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Can I hear a motion to accept, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-eight?
Second. Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, number nineteen, resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-nine, would you read that, please?
Resolution twenty twenty five thirty-nine, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, declaring the termination of the state of local emergency for the City of Tarpon Springs as a result of Hurricanes Helene and Milton, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Can I hear a motion to accept, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty-nine?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, resolu- uh, number twenty, resolution twenty twenty five, um, supportive application to the Florida Division of Historical Resources Special Category Grant, and we'll be hearing from Tommy Keiger.
Thank you, Thomas Keiger, Public Services Director. Um, Mayor Kulianos, members of the board, today we're requesting approval for this resolution to support a grant application, uh, for, uh, historic cemetery restoration. Uh, the goal of the project is to do some restoration work on a number of the historical, uh, grave markers and monuments, uh, in the Secadia Cemetery, which date to the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. Uh, matching funding will be provided from the, uh, Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. We will be, it'll be a beneficial project to, uh, you know, beautify and continue to support our, uh, historical assets in the Secadia Cemetery, so we recommend approval.
Uh, let's go to, um, public comments, are there any public comments on this item?
Do you want me to read the title?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
Resolution twenty twenty five thirty-six, a resolution, the Board of Commissioners, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, supporting the Special Category Grant Application with the Florida Division of Historical Resources from the Public Services Department to repair, stabilize and clean historical monuments at Secadia Cemetery.
Okay, are there any public comments on this item? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Hearing none, uh, the chair will entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Are there any commission, commissioner comments? Commissioner Banther?
No.
Commissioner Di Donato?
No.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No.
Uh, Vice Mayor Eisner? Okay, with, um, no comments, can I hear a roll call on the motion?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, item twenty-one, resolution, uh, twenty twenty five dash forty-one, uh, reimbursement resolution, and that'll be presented by, uh, Finance Director Ron Herring.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Ron Herring, Finance Director. The pers- purpose of resolution two thousand twenty five forty-one is if the city pursues financing capital projects in the future, it allows the city to also finance capital projects that have already incurred expenditures. Usually when financing is pursued is for, to pay for future capital, capital projects. This resolution allows the city to include financing for past expenditures of specific capital project. This resolution is only good for projects that have expenditures for eighteen months from its approval, so it expires eighteen months from the date of the board approves it. Bond counsel drafted the resolution, that the city attorney has reviewed the resolution, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Uh, let's go to the reading from the city attorney.
Resolution twenty twenty five forty-one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, establishing, establishing its intent to reimburse certain expenditures with proceeds of a future tax exempt or taxable financing or financings, providing certain other matters in connection therewith and providing for an effective date.
Uh, let's, before we go to public comment, are there any commissioner questions of Finance Director? No? Okay, uh, public comments on this item? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay, can I have a motion, then we'll go to conversation?
So moved. Second.
All right, I'm gonna make some comments, Mayor. Um, has everybody had a chance to meet with Finance Director and City Manager already? Frank, were you able to? Me too? Well, I.
That's today, right when I met with you, that's pretty disgusting, but yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I just don't want this assumption to, to be like we're, we're going to take out loans or bank note or a, a bond to pay for some of these past projects. I understand we've been a debt low community and that's been great work and policy decisions from, you know, staff, uh, as well as from the past, but, you know, we want our debt low, we, we need to have a conservative bu- budget approach without this potential assumption of being able to present a bank note or a bond in the future that's really going to put a burden on future generations to, to pay the bill. And I've seen the different scenarios that we may be able to accept to pay for some of these projects that, you know, aren't really revenue generating. And, um, we haven't taken out a, a big loan on, let's say, um, since what, the reverse osmosis plant was one of the bigger ones?
That is correct.
So, this is a big deal. We, we don't try to borrow this type of money and create a debt for our community in which we're pretty much one of the lowest in the county for great reasons, unless there are, you know, projects that I think that can help bring revenue or, uh, a return back to the community. And so, um, you know, you see the different options. And then we talked about the ten, and I know this is, I'm just getting out ahead of this because, you know, with this going forward is just to see assumption that if we need the money, we're going to borrow it and we shouldn't do that. We've had a good approach these last so many years. Um, we don't know the uncertainty with the markets as we've all talked about before and, you know, we wanted to pause hiring and, you know, um, but capital improvement projects are something that, you know, if this money even attempts to get borrowed, borrowed by us, the residents need to vote on it. The residents have made it clear that, you saw at the last referendum, from three fifty to five hundred thousand dollars, that it voted upon, that the residents wouldn't need to vote on it. Well, they said, no, we want to vote on the three fifty. So, they want to be involved, they want to be involved in decision making, and I don't think it's the best move for us as a board to take on some of those notes or bonds that I've seen for those type of projects. We just need to slow it down a little bit, need to sharpen our, our pens and try to come back to it all. You know, we've experienced two of the worst hurricanes in the last hundred years. We've seen some of the worst. Any worse than that, then, you know, we need a miracle for our community. And so, you know, what is our end game with some of these capital improvement projects? Because we're going to use the money up four to five years, we're going to have some other big capital improvement projects coming up, this is all rotating. And then what? We're going to be in position to potentially borrow money and we won't even be on the board. And so, you're going to have future boards or, you know, ten years out paying debts, twenty years out paying debts, thirty years out paying debts. I mean, Commissioner Banther's great grandchildren won't have to be paying a debt like that, you know, so, uh. great-grandchildren won't have to be paying a debt like that, you know, so, uh, we don't need to be pulling out money like that for capital improvement projects and, uh, without the, the residents deciding on it. And I know if we go the ten-year route, we don't have to bring it in front of the residents, but no, it has to, and so I'm not gonna support the start of increasing a debt, um, a debt ratio for our community when we've been in a good spot, we have a lot of uncertainty. You know, you saw the Gross Avenue project, that, that ballooned change order after change order, you know, so there's a lot of uncertainties that can happen with even these projects that we may wanna fund and whatnot. So, uh, I'm interested in, um, using those type of big-ticket loans in the future if needed for revenue-producing, in which we really don't have any right now, so we need to work with our, our grant specialists, um, for some, some projects, keep at it, but I don't think it's a good move to even explore right now. And honestly, it's the city manager's first year, I want him to work with the budget that's available and not have this fat kitty in case that, you know, we'll use the note, we take the note out, we take the bond out. It's the first year, I think we all as a board, as this new board, need to work with what we got. It's not much, we know that, we've made some big purchases, but borrowing debt for lo- you know, borrowing funds for long-term debt for our community for some of these capital improvement projects, um, it's just not something I'm gonna support.
Thank you, let's, let's get back to, uh, the, uh, okay, so I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go first on this and, and then I'll go down the, the line. Um, first of all, anything that we borrow, uh, would have to have, for me to, to, to go along with it, would have to have value that's as long, if not longer, than the debt itself. So, and we have things that, uh, unfortunately, we have to address, and, and one of our number one items is stormwater management. So, you know, there are things, we, we have, we do have a very low debt to, um, to revenue ratio, and, and what we, and what we look at in, in, in government, it's different than what you do in your, in private, um, finances. In private finances, you look at, you know, debt to equity, but here, we, we're not really concerned about equity, we're looking more at, at cash flow. So, um, you know, I had done a study on it, I had presented it, it, one of the, the prior boards, where we were one of the lowest, if not the lowest of, we're definitely the lowest full-service city in, in the county. Now, there are some, uh, like Dunedin, they kinda went, you know, they decided they were going to attack all their major initiatives early on, and, and their debt to, um, their cat, uh, uh, debt service to general revenue went up to about twelve percent. Ours right now is, what about, one point nine percent. So if we were going to attack, let's say, for example, one of the items would be to finish to, uh, do the initiatives necessary to handle the Craig Park flooding items, okay? Those are things that are gonna have benefit for our community long into the future, okay? And, you know, what you gotta look at it as, from a economic standpoint, you look at, you do something now, you have inflation and you have interest, right? So if, if inflation, to wait on items, that the inflation is going to exceed most likely the debt service, uh, interest rate, you're really better off to, to attack them now. The citizens get the benefit of solving some of these significant problems that we have to deal with, and yet the, and the debt is, is spread out over a long period of time. Uh, we, if we have, if we go to a big bond in, like, uh, thirty-year or, or anything over ten years, we have to go to referendum anyways, so, um, that, that would go without saying, and, and I wouldn't, you know, y- y- you really, it's very difficult even to go with five or ten-year debt, um, that would drag our ratio up right away, and we really wouldn't get much bang for the buck. So if we did go for any of the major items, it would have to go longer than ten, and we would have to go to referendum anyways, and the, and the residents would decide, and we would have to, we would have to identify those things that we are financing, and then they would have to make a decision if they thought those things have value for us now versus waiting, uh, five or ten years till we, what, save money to do them? Uh, I don't, I don't know how that works. So, um, let's go to Commissioner Banther.
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, I had a good time today, meeting with Ron and staff, thank you, it, it, it was very informative. Um, I've, I've heard some good points up here, I think, I think Commissioner Kulyas brings up a great point, that we need to be extremely cautious when it comes to our approach with debt. We have always been extremely low, um, in comparison to, to other cities a- as, as, as far as our debt load, and that should be something, that should be on the forefront of our minds in these conversations. The mayor brings up an excellent point as it relates to, you know, forecasting inflation, the cost of things now versus, versus, versus the cost of things in the future, that must be considered as well. Um, and debt, debt is simply a tool, it can be used, and you can ruin yourself, or you can make a lot of money, and it has to be handled responsibly. Um, I, I do think that, uh, taking out debt against assets is not always a bad idea. Um, you know, we have built-in safeguards, obviously anything over ten years has to go to the public for, for, for a, 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 a referendum. Uh, we saw a similar thing passed recently with the spoil site, as, as far as the purchase goes, and the, and then thus the, uh, the debt service that followed. I wasn't in support of buying the property, but I was in support of how the city purchased it and you, and you, and, and using appropriate debt, and, and, and using, um, uh, appropriate debt service, uh, you know, so I think debt is a tool, I think we, we, we can use it wisely, and, you know, my biggest thing when I met with Ron Herring was wanting to do all that we can to mitigate, uh, stormwater. We can't stop storm surge, but we had a lot of streets in this town, including mine, I live over on Oleander off, off near the high school, that flooded because the storm sewers could, 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 could just not keep up. And part of that's just a matter of, of being ten feet above sea level, but I know we can improve on that, and I would hate to, uh, be on a completely cash basis and defer, defer , um, important projects because of the fear of debt. That being said, I think it, it was a good point tonight that was made, that we should be very cautious with it, but it's a tool, it should be used responsibly, and I believe we will, thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Um, I understand the caution as well, uh, however, I also know that from experience that it, the longer you wait to do a project, the more it's gonna likely cost you down the road, so I, I, I don't know if we worked out, we can't work it out right now, but I, I'm convinced that there will be savings to go forward, these are all projects that are on the books to, to be done anyway, is, it, but this is a means to accomplish it in, in a shorter period of time. Uh, I know some of you out there probably remember, different projects have been stated that it, this was gonna be done by such-and-such, and because of the thing called money, it, it was delayed. This is a way to still get these projects done and, and, at a savings, hopefully, as to what it would have been when we were gonna do them in five years down the road or six years down the road, so that's a positive. Uh, as far as the, being conservative and, and, and being cautious, certainly we should, but even with, uh, the, the, the amount that we're talking, we're still gonna be down toward the bottom of the list as far as debt ratio, is my understanding. And, uh, I think if not now, then when? Uh, it, it's time that we stop talking and, and get things done, so, that's where it's due.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, truthfully, everything that was set up here is all true. Um, it just depends on what we do with it. So, um, while we were chatting, while, while the Commission was chatting, I took a little list, and the Fire Station Seventy is a must, there's no question that we have to do it. And the fire chief would tell you that it is true, and there's litigation with it, it's not a, for a CAT five, it's gotta be done, we lose, um, we, we lose, I, and I think it's, um, jurisdiction, is it, uh, if we don't get it done? Um, but I may be using the wrong word, but it's a six million dollar project that has to be done, is no question. Craig Park seawall that's on here, it's phase one. It's, this is not a discussion of phase two, which is gonna be even more difficult to deal with down the road, but phase one has to be done. Um, we did get a loan, a, a grant, rather, and, uh, it, it's, it's not a question whether we can kick this can down the road, it has to be done. Um, I look at the Beckett Bridge utilities, as of hopefully, uh, December, uh, Pinellas County is gonna knock down that bridge and rebuild a new bridge, it's a two-year project, and prior to that, we have to move the utilities, um, or they won't go ahead with the project. The last time that, uh, bridge was, um, anything was done with it was nineteen fifty-four, so you've got a seventy-year-old bridge. Um, I look at the Lime Huey lift station, all of our hu- uh, lift stations were damaged in the storm, uh, you can't leave these things to fail. Um, I look at the Alt, Alt Nineteen Bridge Waterline, um, that's another project that we have to replace, there's just no two ways about it. We have people that come up and tell us how their water is orange, there's no pressure, there's, there's so many things, this is the oldest city in Pinellas County, things have to be changed. Now, I don't wanna go back and decide whether, um, the prior committee, uh, Commission did things or didn't do things, they had their priorities, we have our priorities. Um, I don't like, um, spending my kids' money or your kids' money, but these things, as the mayor said, if we do spend it now, it's not gonna be the answer for everybody, but what it will be is at least we'll get to utilize it for a number of years, and if inflation goes up, we've, we've spent cheaper money, if inflation goes down, we can get lower interest rate, we can prepay it back. Um, so it's not that we're just gonna go over the top. Um, and last but not least, the stormwater action plan that's on here, as it's been said, we just can't leave that to have another, um, issue that, that goes on. My question to you, Ron, is if we spend all, or not spend, but if we borrow all of this that's here, what would that bring us up to as in far as, um, debt to ratio, do you know, do you have that?
It was at like three point nine six percent, which is the average that we, when we did the survey was four point five one, so we would still be below the average. You know, where Dunedin is at twelve point two, Newport Ritchie's at ten point something, we're still below the average, we're still one of the lower ones.
Well, I knew that, that's why I asked you that question. I was listening. So i- it's not like, I, I don't want the Commission to think that we're becoming Dunedin and that we're just nilly-willy just doing projects for no reason, but all these projects that I'm reading through, these are not, you know, elective, they are mandatory that we get it done. Um, and I don't know how else to get it done but to, you know, responsibly, you know, deal with it. Um, you know, some of the projects that we spoke to are a year out or two years out, we still have elected, uh, projects, we still haven't dealt with the, um, with the dredging, you know, that we need to do. I mean, if you remember, we got to speak about the dredging, that hasn't been done in, there, there's no telling whether it was sixty years, seventy years, supposed to be done according to our books every three years, and we've never done it. This is all the back bay, so there is a lot of things that we need to look at, and those elective things, we can look at responsibly and see what we could do and what we can't do. We also need to wait and see what the militarier's gonna be for what, what the, uh, you know, what the Pinellas County decides to give us, and, and hopefully, we don't get involved where, uh, the state decides to remove the taxes for the tax base, and then we get into, and this, I'm going off the tangent here a little bit, but then Tallahassee will be deciding for us how much money we get to spend on what, instead of us deciding what we spend on it. So, um, I, I'm interested in, you know, uh, looking into this and having a work session where we could all decide on what's important, what's not, how much we should borrow and for how long.
Well, let's, let's, um, let's go to public comment. Before we go to public comment, I was, I wanna make one more statement, then I'll come back for another round with the Commissioners. This is just the first step, we have to do this by law, so this, correct, Ron? This is the first step, this isn't a decision to borrow money.
Oh, no, no, it's-
This is just, we ha- by law, we have to have this, this first, uh, resolution, and then we go into the budget process and we go to, you know, what we would, you know, if, if we wanna pursue that, what, what we would, uh, be financing, how much we'd be financing, again, if it has to go to referendum, then that's a whole nother story, but this is just a first-
It's not committing you-
-procedural step-
Right.
-towards allowing us to go-
It's not commit-
-explore, allowing us to explore this.
It's not committing you to any debt, but if you did in the future, you can recapture those expenses from these projects, and you don't have to do all these, it's just listing the ones that might have expenditures between now and when you did the debt issuance.
But this is just a, again-
It's a formality to cover IRS-
-the first procedural thing we have to do to go forward.
To cover for IRS regulations.
Can, uh, let's go to public comment, is there any public comment on this issue? Uh, Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay, um, do Commissioners have, let's go to, Commissioner Banther, do you have any follow-up?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato? Commissioner Kulyas?
Sure, I mean, we're, you guys, we're hearing numbers now, eighteen and a half million, um, you know it's gonna be at least ten years or more, so the voter's gonna have to decide. I mean, guys, we see these capital improvement projects, and trust me, I wanna beat my chest and say, hey, we got all these projects done, but not at the expense of, you know, generations twenty, thirty years from now. All these are great projects that need to get done, you don't think in the next five, ten years, other big projects like this are gonna come about? What are we gonna do then? We're gonna borrow more money? We, we, we've had a good financial direction for, for many years, um, we need to go through the budget season without assuming this rule, because it's all, everybody's eyes are lit up, it's, you know, even Commissioner DiDonato, who's, you know, um, talks about being conservative spending, so, I mean, with all due respect, it's, you know, as, as we look at this, and then the unfunded capital projects, the Cops and Kids Building, four and a half million dollars, the Bayou dredging, which we could piece out, we can do parts that are more important than others, um, to renovate the old Cops and Kids Building, that's one and a half million dollars. Between those two buildings, that's six million dollars, that we're gonna pay for some of these other big projects, that way we can shift six million dollars to the Cops and Kids Buildings. It's a lot of money to spend to, to put on bankroll and debt for some projects like that, that, you know, I, trust me, even Mark Lacorice, that was his baby, the, the Cops and Kids Center, but, you know, to, to bankroll it in debt to, to produce it for some of these other projects too is, is not good, as well as, you know, all I'm saying is, it's our, our first year, you know, a- as this new board, the city manager, I don't want this assumption that we're gonna get this big loan out to start doing these capital improvement projects and say it's gonna save us money when it might hurt us in the future, so, um, I'm not gonna support it, and, you know, if, we could have pulled this off a long time ago, we're, we're still in a financial, we could say that we ended the state of emergency, but there's a lot of uncertainty, and some of these projects don't really align. And as far as the stormwater action plan, what is our goal? If our goal is to improve a couple streets and they still have king tides two, three, four times a year on those streets, it's not a suc- a successful project. So, you know, I don't like borrowing like this because I know that, what you see, you look at those numbers each year, you borrow so many, where you borrow, what, six million dollars, you gotta pay out almost seven forty each year. If you're borrowing seventeen million, you gotta pay out one point five three million for fifteen years. And yeah, we might, we accept one of these at eighteen and a half, that's gonna put us right at three point nine percent, as he talked about, our, our debt ratio, right in the middle with the rest of the county, one shot for a lot of these projects that, you know, some aren't necessa- aren't necessities, and so what are we gonna do now? So I'm not gonna support it, I think we all need to be conservatively responsible, like we all talk and brag about up here, and sharpen our pencils up for budget season, and then we can look after what we have. We know it's not gonna be too much for us to spend, but I'm not gonna support this, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So, a number of projects were mentioned about the- So a number of projects were mentioned about the, um, the Cops and Kids. Those are elective things, and if those are things we don't have money for, I understand as much as I'd like to. These projects that I'm looking at here are not elective. They are mandatory. The ball is rolling right now when we need the money for it. I agree with you when it says, when you say about that things are going to come up in five years, but this is already here now. And unless somebody could give me a way to pay for these things, I have to go along with this, not to make it 15 years, not to make it 20 years. The 3.8 or 3.9 debt to ratio is not 50% because we're at 1-point-something, and the high is 12, so mid-range would be 6. So we're still half of mid-range. These projects cannot be pushed off. And if somebody would like to explain to me that we're building a fire station and we can stop right now and leave it the way it is, we can't. Gray Park Seawall, if we don't use the $2 million that the grant, the federal government gave us for the grant, we lose it. The Beckett Bridge is scheduled for December. Got to got to move the utilities or they're not going to tear the bridge down. The Alt 19 Bridge Water, I mean, I just could go through these. These are not elective. They're all mandatory. If we want to discuss elective items in our budget, I'm happy to discuss it. I'm not looking to just run us, ramrod all of this through. Believe me, I was at the same meeting you were at, not at the same time, but I heard all of the items for the wish list. I have the total in my head. I know what it was. I don't want to share it because there's always money you could spend, and you could spend a lot of it, and tomorrow you could even spend more.
Okay.
So I I'm aware of how much we could spend. That's not my goal. These are mandatory that need to be done, or we're going to be in trouble. Those are the ones I want to be able to deal with.
Okay. Can we go, let's, we have the motion, it was seconded.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that the Fire Station 70 and Craig Park Seawall are cash-funded already.
Commissioner, there's no point, we're we're getting way off.
No, we're not. We're talking about issues and funding.
The question is whether we're going to start the process to explore debt. That's what the question is right now. There's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, correct, City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
No.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Culianis?
Yes.
Item 22, Ordinance 2025-04. City Attorney, would you please read it?
Ordinance 2025-04, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending the official zoning atlas for 32.49 acres, more or less, of real property located between North Highland Avenue and Keystone Road, approximately 500 feet east of North Highland Avenue, from Agriculture A District and Residential Planning Development, RPD District, to Agricultural A District, providing for findings and providing for an effective date.
Okay, this is a second reading.
Mayor, do you want me to read the quasi-judicial?
Yes, please, please.
Mayor, this is actually for the next four items, which are quasi-judicial, the same. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity at a quasi-judicial hearing. It is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. Mayor, I would also ask for the commissioners to disclose any ex parte communications or conflicts of interest they may have.
Anyone have any?
City Attorney, if this is from the last meeting forward, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. No comment.
Thank you.
You can do the swearing-in and all that, just move the whole thing.
If we're ready. Anyone's going to speak on this matter, if you please stand up? Do you swear or affirm your testimony before the Board of Commissioners? Will it be the truth, so help you?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an out and go. Planning Director, do you want to?
Thank you. Renee Vincent, Planning and Zoning Director. This is Ordinance 25, 2025-04, rezoning property on Keystone Road. This is the second reading. The board has previously reviewed and approved this at first reading. There's been no new information to add to the record, just for record purposes. This is a rezoning to, from agricultural and residential plan development to straight agricultural, and this is, supports the future development of the property as a large, very large lot in agricultural subdivision.
Would the applicant like to make any statement? Does, uh, let's go to Commissioner Questions of of Staff or the applicant? Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No.
Commissioner Culias?
No.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
No.
Okay, I have none as well. The Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Are there any public comments on this item? Austin?
There are no online comments.
I'll go back to Commissioner Comments on the motion. Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No.
Commissioner Culias?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay, with no comments, let's go to roll call.
First, I want to announce that the legal advertisement requirements were met by this public hearing and called by virtue of the ordinance being published by title with a map in the Tampa Bay Times on February 26th of 2025 and April 30th of 2025. Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Culianis?
Yes.
Let's go to item number 23, Application for Annexation, Land Use and Zoning for a Property Located at 249 and 251 Ankle Road. Would you please, uh, let me, we just take over. City Attorney?
Yes. Ordinance 2024-08, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing 0.37 acres, more or less, of real property located at 249 and 251 Ankle Road. Application 24-51, providing for findings and providing for an effective date. Again, the quasi-judicial proceedings that have already been read apply in this situation. I want to make sure that if there's any ex parte communication or conflict of interest that commissioners state that at this time.
Are there any?
No.
No?
Oh, this is Ankle Road, no.
Do you want to do your swearing-in?
I will. I just want to make sure everybody's.
Yep.
If you're going to speak on this matter, please stand, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm your testimony before the Board of Commissioners? Will it be the truth, so help you?
I do.
Thank you.
I do not see Mr. Seaman in the audience. Is there anybody here representing the application? I'm comfortable going forward with second reading without it, but I just wanted to make it, make it known for the record.
Ms. Vincent?
Yes. You're ready. Thank you. This is Application 25 dash, excuse me, 24-51. There are three actions under this, Ordinance 2024-08, which is annexing approximately 0.375 acres into the city of Tarpon Springs from Pinellas County. And then there's the companion ordinance to amend the future land use map. That's Ordinance 2024-10, from the Pinellas County designation of E Employment to the City of Tarpon Springs designation of Industrial General. And then the rezoning, companion rezoning ordinance is 2024-09, amending the zoning atlas from the Pinellas County designation of C2 Commercial General Services to the City of Tarpon Springs designation of WD2. This is second reading of this application, and all three of these ordinances, it's taken a bit of time. It was actually began last year, was approved on first reading by the board, and then we had to submit through Pinellas County, had to go through that review process. They did recommend approval, and the, and then it actually had, we had to wait until after the election because of the, your annexing property. So that's why this is, you may not be as familiar with this one, but it is second reading. There's no new information to enter into the record other than the approvals by Pinellas County on the land use and their review, and so it is ready for, ready for a second reading. Thank you.
It does, and obviously, the applicant's not here to make any statement. Are there any public comments? The Chair will entertain a motion, then we can go to Commissioner Comments.
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Banther?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Do you have any comments?
No comments.
Huh? Oh, comments?
No comments. Commissioner Culias?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
No comments.
I have none. Did I, I, did I go to public comment?
No, no.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? And Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay. Now, this has, what, three?
Three parts, yeah.
Three parts to it. So I think we're going to have to have, do we have to have a motion on?
I would do a motion on each one of the ordinances, Mayor.
Okay. So let's, let's, um, let's have a, I know we have a motion, but let's go to a motion on Ordinance 2024-08.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Uh, roll call.
The legal advertisement requirements were met for all three ordinances and published them as a virtue of the ordinance being published by title within that, since April 2nd of 2024 and April 30th of 2025. Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Mayor Eisner? Vice Mayor Eisner?
I have a question before. You have a question before you vote? Okay. Yes, I do. I voted on this in forward Pinellas. Is that a conflict?
No.
Thank you. Then it's yes.
Mayor Culianis?
Yes. I'd like to entertain a motion on Orp- to pass Ordinance 2024-10?
Mayor, I need to read the title.
Okay, go ahead.
Ordinance 2024-10, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending the future land use map for 0.37 acres, more or less, of real property located at 249 and 251 Ankle Road. Application 2451 from Pinellas County, Employment E Category to City of Tarpon Springs Industrial General IG Category, providing for findings and providing for an effective date.
Okay, can I have a motion on 24, Ordinance 2024-10?
So moved. Sir.
Okay. Let's just go to roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Culianis?
Yes.
Would, um, would you read Ordinance 2024-09?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, mending the official zoning atlas for 0.37 acres, more or less, of real property located at 249 and 251 Ankle Road, from Pinellas County C2, C2 General Commercial and Services District to City of Tarpon Springs, WD2 Waterfront Marine Industry Development District, providing for findings and providing for an effective date.
I'd like to entertain a motion on to approve Ordinance 2024-09?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Culianis?
Yes.
Okay, let's go to item 24, Resolution 2025-29, Conditional Use for Childcare Center Located at 301 North Pinellas Avenue. City Attorney?
Resolution 2025-29, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number 25-21, requesting conditional use approval to allow a childcare center at 301 North Pinellas Avenue in the T5D North Pinellas Avenue transect zone, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, I would ask the commissioners again if there is any conflict of interest or ex parte communication as this applies to the prior quasi-judicial proceeding.
Are there any?
Yes, City Attorney, I had, I did have one of the representatives of the applicant just sent me a text that they were at the planning and zoning meeting, and so I got to watch the meeting a little bit and just talked with them about what the results of it were, and that was about it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Do you want to do your swearing-in?
If you're going to speak on this matter, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm your testimony before the Board of Commissioners? Will it be the truth, so help you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Vincent?
Thank you. This is an application for a conditional use request, Resolution 2025-29, for property at 301 North Pinellas Avenue. The specific request is to establish, or actually reestablish, a childcare center and preschool at the property. This has been previously used for many years as a, as a, as a child daycare because the use expired and, or ceased in 2023, and it had been more than one year. It does require a conditional use to reestablish the childcare center there because it is a conditional use process. This is the location at 301, it's the northwest corner of Reed Street and North Pinellas Avenue, across from the, uh, what do you call this?
Community Center.
The commu-
St. Nicholas Community Center.
St. Nicholas Community Center. Okay. So for the, the onsite conditions, the, when the Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this, there was some discussion about parking. There's really no changes to the parking situation from when it previously operated. There, they do have approximately five spaces on site. They also have access to the overflow parking to the north, uh, so, which is under the same ownership. There, so just again, some just additional context and some photos. This is the parking. There's a drop-off here as well, Circular Drive. This is the, you know, the overflow parking to the north. So our conditional use criteria requires to review this for conformance with Land Development Code and address, you know, whether the property is appropriate, the use is appropriate to the property and compatible with the area. Really, I mean, I think the best, you know, analysis you can provide on this is the fact that it basically operated exactly as a, as a childcare center for many, many, many years before the, it ceased in 2023, and no real knowledge of any conflicts with the surrounding properties. This is a mixed-use area that has most community, community uses, residential and business uses. There are no issues with the consistency with the conference of plan. It's not expected to impact historical or environmental resources. This is, the site is in the historic district, and the building is identified as a contributing altered structure. Any exterior modifications would have to be reviewed by the HPP or the staff as appropriate for conformance with the guidelines. It's not an environmentally sensitive site. The use is not expected to adversely affect adjoining property values. There's already facilities to serve this with public facilities. There are no issues with providing for efficient and orderly development. There are no issues with providing for efficient and orderly development. All requirements of the Florida Department of Education will have to be met. That's, we, we don't exempt anybody from that. They must also have to have a local business tax receipt to operate the childcare facility. Parking is being accommodated and the proposed use is not expected to adversely impact general health, safety and welfare. Staff recommendation is to approve. We recommended two conditions, uh, prior to issuance of a local business tax receipt. The onsite parking lot shall be striped in accordance with the land development code, including 188 accessible parking space and a local business tax receipt must be obtained within, uh, 12 months. The planning and zoning board reviewed this on April 21st. There was, uh, some discussion. Ultimately, the board did recommend approval by a vote of four, three and with two additional conditions. One is prior to the issuance of the local business tax receipt, the gate shall be installed between the subject property and adjacent property, uh, to the north utilized for shared parking. The gate must be accessible for, for the proposed childcare center use while also being secured and ensure safety of the children. And number two, the childcare center must comply with all applicable state licensing requirements for the proposed use. There were no members of the public who spoke at that meeting. So the resolution that is in your agenda backup does reflect the recommendation of the planning and zoning board. And, uh, staff recommends approval as drafted.
Okay, now let's have, um, let's go to, uh, commissioner questions of, um, Ms. Vincent. Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No questions.
Commissioner Culias?
No questions.
Vice Mayor?
No questions.
And I have none as well. Would the applicant like to make a statement? Okay. Are there any public comments? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay, then let's, the chair will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Now let's go to commissioner comments on the motion. Commissioner Banther?
No, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato? Commissioner Culias?
No comments.
Vice Mayor?
No comments.
No comments with me as well. Given that, I can go straight to, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you. Okay, number 25. Resolution 2025-40, appeal of heritage preservation board decision for demolition of a contributing structure located at 154 Reed Street. Uh, city attorney?
Resolution 2025-40, a resolution of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 24-78, appealing the decision of the heritage preservation board to deny a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of a national register historic district and local historic district contributing structure located at 154 Reed Street, providing for a certificate of appropriateness, providing for conditions and providing for an effective date. Mayor, this is the last quasi judicial hearing before you tonight. Uh, again, the question is, was there any ex parte communication or conflict of the, of interest?
Are there any?
Yes, I did speak wi- wi- with Mr. Stefan to get clarity on the issue from him.
And I as well spoke with Mr. Stefan yesterday. Probably a five minute conversation. So.
Anything further from the commissioners?
No. Okay. Want me to swear in? Swearing in?
Do you swear affirm your testimony before the Board of Commissioners shall be the truth so help you?
I do.
And somebody, yes. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. So do we, let's go to, uh, questions of staff first. Uh, let me, I'll start off. Oh, I'm sorry, you haven't done your presentation. I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
So, um, this is an application requesting, um, or an appeal of an application request to the board. This was a, for property at 154 Reed Street. The application was, uh, to the heritage preservation board seeking, um, a demolition permit. The property is at 154 Reed Street, uh, which is highlighted here on the map. This is a contributing structure in both the local, now, the local historic district, which is the blue outline, as well as the national district, which is the red outline on the map. Uh, just a little bit of a look at the property. Uh, this is, uh, what it looked like in January of 2024. Uh, this is January of 2025. So this, this property did flood during, um, the hurricanes. You can see the water line here, uh, per the applicant's, uh, provided materials. They had about 26 inches of water in the property. There was a previous application filed, uh, back in 2023 to rehab this, rehab the house. That was approved, a procedure of certificate of appropriateness. There was no permits pulled and none of that work was ever done. And then fast forward, we have the hurricane. The property flooded, um, and then the applicant, uh, submitted, um, in January. It was reviewed, uh, an application to demolish the structure. It is a contributing structure. If I have to characterize the, the board, the H P B's, um, review, um, they struggled. I think they felt that there was, uh, not enough information to make, um, a decision. And they very much, I think, would have preferred that the applicant come back to them with additional information. Ultimately, they did take a vote and they did recommend denial of the application to, to demolish. Just kind of want to provide a little bit of context as I went through this. This is the survey, um, the, the property here. Based on the applicant's, uh, information in the report, we don't have a, an elevation certificate or anything, but the first finished floor of the house is approximately five feet, um, about, you know, above, um, sea level. The base flood elevation there is, you know, at 10. So, you know, you'd be looking at, um, a bit of, you know, a challenge to elevate the property. But again, nothing that's, you know, that could not be performed. One of the things that calls the board some concern as well as staff was the fact that, um, after the flood, there was no, um, there was no remediation that took place. So the property went further into deterioration after the flood. Because not, you know, according to their testimony, they did not do any remediation. So the board was wrestling with, you know, is that constituting demolition by neglect? And so there, so there was a lot of things that really kind of were discussed, um, during the hearing process. Ultimately, the review guidelines, um, for demolition, that's, you know, this is the decision to demolish historic structure as a measure of last resort and shall be based on demonstration that there is no other feasible alternative. And then there's, you know, a series of review criteria. I think the things that are pertinent to this discussion really is, you know, whether reasonable measures can be taken to save the building, structural or traditional cultural property. And whether the building, structure or traditional cultural property is capable of earning a reasonable economic return and whether the perpetuation of the building or structure, considering its physical condition, its location and anticipated expense of rehabilitation would be economically feasible. So when an applicant has a choice, if they seek to demolish a property and if the demolition is denied, they can, they're really, they have kind of two options. They can try to directly appeal that to the Board of Commissioners or they can, they can go back through the process and try to get an economic hardship exception. The board didn't not have enough information to consider it from an economic hardship exception. And I think that's part of the problem. So ultimately, they, you know, they, they resorted to denying the application. You know, another factor of consideration is, you know, is it's a property that's so unique that it warrants, you know, some, you know, special consideration? On, on Reed Street, you have a very eclectic mix of homes. This is the only craftsman style. But we, you know, there are other craftsman styles in the neighborhood. It, it is still somewhat unique in, in its architecture. That was put into the record, um, uh, by, uh, the principal planner that presented this. If you want me to read it verbatim, I'll pull it out of the staff report, but there was some uniqueness there. Looking at the, the comprehen-, you know, the comprehensive layout of and architecture on Reed Street in general. So it, ultimately, the board did deny this. And the applicant did submit based on the evidence that they had to make a decision. Your, you really have three options in this. You can deny the appeal request as it's been, it was originally presented to the H P B. You can approve the request, uh, to, you know, for the demolition. Or, you know, you can direct the applicant to submit the additional information needed to determine if there is an economic hardship exception. If it's warranted, um, and ideally remand that case back to the historic preservation board and let them make that decision. That has not been done. And so, um, if you're asking me for a recommendation, I would certainly recommend the third option here. So with that, you know, there's a whole lot of information that's in the agenda backup. I'm not gonna try to sit here and rehear the case unless I'm told to. But I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Let me, uh, let me go first on the questions from, um, the board. When you say they ha- have other information they need to, they didn't submit, what, what information were you talking about?
So. The hardship exception, I'm gonna read this. The hardship exception requires information regarding the cost of the proposed construction, additional costs incurred to comply with the recommendations of the H P B, i.e. in this case preserving it, structural soundness, market value of the property before and after demolition, economic feasibility of rehabilitation and for income producing property, the capitalization rate based on net operating income. So the information that was provided, I told you that there was previously a certificate of appropriateness that was approved in 2023 for a roof, for doors, for windows, a whole bunch of work. None of that was done. When you look at the estimates that were provided to rehab the structure now, none of that's teased out. So it's like, you know, they're, you know, the applicant basically is like, the property flooded, it's not feasible. And so there's, the board couldn't tease apart, you know, what's really flood damage? What is, you know, previous damage? What, you know, what is neglect? So they were looking for additional information. So I, a lot of it is, you know, is the, you know, I'll quote the city manager. We are here, this, this is, this is what is. So how do we, how do we resolve the situation? You know, certainly more information was requested by the H P B that they didn't feel like they had enough or parsed out accurate information to make a decision.
Okay, when you're, um, when you talk about neglect, isn't that, aren't there, isn't it two separate things? Cause if you, the one, if you go back to the prior slide to this and the highlighted where you talk about, um, uh, neglect. Now, isn't that more of a code enforcement issue?
It, it, it should be managed as a code enforcement issue.
But what is it?
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult thing to, to, to balance. The board does not want to, you know, there, you know, I don't want to say reward somebody for letting a property deteriorate. So, you know, that was not the, you know, in this instance, there's probably a lot of this that was no fault of this property owner. He hasn't owned the property for, yeah, I think a couple of years maybe. So, and initially they were gonna rehab the property. And then it flooded. And now they want to demolish the property rather than repairing it and elevating it. That's what this boils down to.
Okay, but, you know, like we had our, when we had our little conversation today about it, we, we don't have a time machine, they can't go back and
Correct.
and do anything you, that you believe they could have done or should have done. We're here now, so we, so I, I'm, I'm not sure that the neglect part is, isn't just, um, you know, irrelevant at this stage. Okay.
The one thing I would say-
We have to deal with the, the condition the property is in and, and how it needs to be dealt with now. Forget about, again, we don't have a time machine, they can, they, what they could have done or should have done. And that, and that's a real judgment call
It is.
to say that somebody did this or should have done that. Because had they come in and cut drywall out, that would have maybe prevented some molding issue. That doesn't mean that the property, uh, hasn't been damaged to the extent that it's not feasible to, uh, put it back. So, um, okay, I'm gonna, uh, let's go to the other commissioners and then, and Commissioner Banther?
Um, I think we have to deal with what we have at hand. Uh, I, and let me preface this, I, I have served on this, on this heritage board before. You know, them issuing a demo permit is, is really their option of last resort. You know, and they're very hesitant to, and I understand why. I, I, I fully support them. So this board tonight decides to, to, to approve this on appeal, it's not telling the heritage board necessarily that, that, that they err per se or did wrong. There are just some decisions that, that just come to us on appeal. We've seen this before. I think, I, 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 I don't want to think this is, that this is, that this, this is one of them. Um, I'm anxious to hear from the applicant tonight on their presentation for, for, for me to make my final decision. But I, 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 I do feel that we have to deal with what's in front of us. Again, like, like the mayor said, we can't go back in the time machine. You know, it's not, you know, again. And also, one question I do have for, for you Renee, if this was not a contributing structure, would it have had to have been raised, uh, per FEMA?
Um, if it were not a contributing structure?
The whole, the whole like 50% rule we were dealing with?
It's, it, the, so this property is exempt from the 50% rule because it's a contributing structure in the national register district. If it were not a contributing structure, it, it wouldn't even come to, to the H P B to do a demolition.
And that, and I think that's important for us to consider. You know, that, that's an important fact. And for those that don't know what that is, if your home was damaged in the hurricane, more than fif-, more than 50%, FEMA can require you to bring it up to code before you getting building permits. Okay, obviously, if you're, if you're a contributing structure in our historic district, you get, you get, you get away from that. So I think that's something we need, we need to consider tonight. And then, and then what I saw in the backup as it relates to the repair costs, I think is, is just insurmountable. There's just no way that that's gonna make any sense to me. So, uh, I'll, I'll hear, I'll, I'll hear what my colleagues have to say and the applicant as well.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I would concur with what you said as well, Commissioner Banther. But I, I have, in going through this, I just don't see, I'd like, like you said, we have to deal with what we have in front of us and I don't see enough here. So I'm, I'm leaning toward option three. And I'm assuming in that option, it would go back to the H P B board?
Yes.
There, there just needs to be more information to determine the need, the need to demolish it, to, to me, because it is in the district. And if, if we're gonna have a district, then we, we need to go through that process. So that's, that's where I'll leave.
Yeah, just, uh, we're gonna come back again and have a conversation about this once we have a motion. But, uh, this is just questions of, of staff. Vice Mayor? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Culias, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, uh, we need to see some more information. Right now, it's a denial for me. I see I, some of these numbers are just outrageous. I think they're inflated big time. And, you know, my, my question is, there's, you know, permits out, ready to get work done. And then, you know, the hurricane comes along and I, obviously there was a, no work or any permits even put in for quite some time. And now the hurricane is, you know, the issue that gets to save it all. Well, I'm, I'm gonna be very frank when I ask the applicant, what are their intentions to knock it down? They obviously have the property that's, you know, all one big property. So I want to see what, what the intent is. But I, I don't believe a lot of those numbers when it comes to renovating or re redoing that building, not at the cost of $400,000 plus. So, um, I don't know where they came from, but this is a big item here. Cause a lot of you talk about set precedents and knocking historical buildings down and protecting them. Well, this is a big precedent you're about to set here. So, um, right now, it's a denial for me and I have some questions for the applicant.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
So I have a question for the attorney before I ask a question from Renee. This whole process is in my wheelhouse. I am retired flood restorator, mold remediation guy. Am I allowed to add? Am I allowed to ask any sort of question?
Absolutely.
Okay. Would I be classified an expert in asking those questions?
No.
Okay, so my first question is, why did we not have a mold remediation person do the estimate of what it was to either repair this or not repair it? I know you don't have an answer to that, so that's why I asked the question. So I am not allowed to give any contributing evidence either, correct?
Anything you say would not be considered evidence in this situation. If you're asking for, based on your expertise, asking for clarifying information, or asking the applicant for information, there's nothing wrong with that. You come to the board, everybody comes to the board with their background and their expertise, but we're not going to take it as competent substantial evidence.
Okay, so at least I can make the comment about it.
Yes.
Okay, so so many of the homes in the fruit section, et cetera, et cetera, were not repairable. Now, whether people go and decide that they want to make it repairable, that's up to them. What I looked at with this particular property, and I read through exactly what Commissioner Koulias said as well, mold remediation is extremely expensive, and more times than not, most of the homes that were estimated were not worthy of repair. They were not cost efficient. More people than this gentleman, or whoever it is doing the application, are also looking to knock their house down and start over. My recommendation would be to knock the house down. That's not a question, so let me rephrase that.
Right, wait, you still have to hear all the evidence before you make a decision.
Yeah, well, so my thinking is, don't they have to wait to have a determination of whether it falls under FEMA or not?
The property, okay. It's a contributing structure
Right.
in historic district. So the 50% rule does not apply. So doesn't mean that the property shouldn't be elevated, it will not be required to be elevated. It will be a choice to be elevated.
But don't they have to come in and make a determination first whether it is or isn't to be elevated?
No.
So you're saying it doesn't have to be elevated?
It does not have to be elevated
Okay.
because it's an historic structure.
But somebody has to do an inspection of it, correct?
I'm not sure if this had a FEMA inspection or not.
Well, we hired a firm to go around to all of the homes to do
Generally, yes. Everything did
Didn't that, didn't that fall under that same pretense that that one had to be inspected as well?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, why I'm going with this is because if you go back to the slide, original slide with the yellow, it said there neglect. So it's not neglect. Neglect is leaving something in disarray, it's not repairing. This was a sudden loss of hurricane, so nobody aban, you got to put it back for a second. It was not an abandonment, abandonment, it was not a neglect, it was not in disrepair, it wasn't vandalism. Now, when you say, could it become damaged, it doesn't really specify by what. You know, you could have a flood, and clean water can be rectified very easily. Saltwater cannot. So I find that that whole ruling is not something that I would rule by. This was a unique storm, even if they wanted to get somebody to do restoration and remediation, you couldn't find people in those, in that timeframe. Everybody was handling everything. So I really have no other questions about it from you. I would ask the same questions of the applicant, but I've been at this so many, so many times, and it's very easy when you don't have a knowledge of what is involved, you don't really get the full picture. That's all I have to say.
Let's, let's get a statement from the applicant.
Presented some presentations here I'm going to hand out. I do have a copy for Madam Clerk to
Please give your name and
I'm Attorney Michael Stefan, representing the Martieri Family Trust.
Thank you.
One, two, three, four, five, and one extra.
Can I, can I ask a question? Is this new information?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
It is a, it is not new information, all of the information stems from the prior hearing.
Awesome, thank you.
And I can testify to that as well, and I have a spare copy for
Just wanted to ask.
I have one.
Yeah, sure. Thanks.
We're going to try to move this on as quickly as possible here, but I think most of the questions that you all posed will be answered. One of the things that needs to be dispelled is this neglect motion. I actually have a transcript that I'm going to read some parts from the exact hearing that we had transcribed. The hearing, at best, leaned to the basis of denial as negligence. There was a catastrophic flood. I'm not here to tell you that that was the case, it's record evidence, and I'm about to prove it, but I want to lay out a little foundational background as to what's going on here. So if you look at the front, you got a picture of the residence in question, also an outline in the property appraiser map. As we turn to page two, I think an important distinction here is that my client owns 160 Reed Street, more familiarized as the large church building on the corner. He also owns 158 Reed Street and 154 Reed Street. So they're all adjacent parcels, that corner is controlled by the trust. I also want to provide some examples to dispel the notion that Mr. Martieri is in the business of knocking down buildings. Mr. Martieri spent millions of dollars to restore the church building on the corner. I provided pictures of that, slides five, six, seven, eight, nine. He's not in the business to knock down buildings. And that was a big issue that was discussed at length from the Heritage Board. He's also here to testify to that as well. Another thing, additionally, Mr. Martieri owns other historic structures. In fact, recently, he just donated a large portion of money to give 17 West Orange Street to the HEPA Foundation. So he is a owner of other structures, and again, it is not his business to wreck the town and destroy it. I really need to dispel that myth. One of the things that needs to be taken into consideration here, you talk about precedents, 158 Reed Street, which is to the left and is owned by my client, on June 4, 2024, you can see on slide 13, the application was approved to demolish the building based on the flood. So to me, there's not much of a difference between the house next door and this one. In fact, on slide 15, you can see this was taken from the city. They acknowledged that they should approve the application for demolition. So when you talk about a prior precedence, it's confusing to me how one house can be demolished, but yet the house next door can't. I was unable to find that in reviewing the record, the basis for that, it wasn't discussed in the hearing, but it is important. Again, slide 16 shows you the outline of where the structure is. Slide 17, which also comes from the Heritage Board record, is a picture of what the flooding looked like on that street. As you can see, it was incredibly high, I would not recommend walking through it, it was saltwater, and as I get into the record evidence, you will hear from the board that the water intrusion came both through the bayou as well as the rear end of the canal. So the home was sandwiched. There was nothing that could be done to prevent this flooding, and I need to dispel that myth. Again, slide 18 was graciously put up by the city here, the arrow indicates the floodline, that was the plane of water that was taken. Slide 19, and again, I also want to stress here, this specific proposal was given to the Heritage Board. It outlines the cost of what it would take to restore the home back to its original state. Now, the total is 823,000, that does include the original purchase price. So if you strip that out, you're looking about $425,000 to restore this home, factoring in the purchase price. Again, you'll hear this in the record evidence testimony, you would be over $1,000 a square foot to own this home, which makes absolutely no economic sense. And when you talk about economic hardship and economic use, it just doesn't make any sense. The intent, which I will get to here shortly and was brought up in the meeting, is to demolish and replace. My client is more than happy to have some type of restrictive language in the demolition order that requires a reasonable replacement to the same type of historical standards. If this board chooses to have those historical plans approved by the prior board, there's no objection. Again, we're not trying to hide the ball here, nobody's building tennis courts. To the extent that he's going to rebuild, he should have that right, and we have no objection to keeping it historically symmetrical with the neighborhood. So I know this is going to be tedious, but it has to be done. I have a copy of the transcript from the Heritage Board that I'm going to hand out to all of you. I'm not going to read the entire thing because we'd be here till 2:00 in the morning. There are certain excerpts that need to be read, read to you guys, in order for you to understand the mindset and the decision-making of the Heritage Board. The Heritage Board stressed that there was neglect. I'm not sure what neglect there was on the dwelling unit, because a hurricane sandwiched it from two sides with saltwater. The Heritage Board also inserted improper influence based on their own opinion as to what should have been done if it was them, what were they were going to do? And again, you don't have to take my word for it, I'm just going to read small excerpts. Also, there's a ton of personal bias from that board as it relates to what should have been done. This notion that somehow we're going to go back and be remanded for economic hardship and exception back to that board, I don't know what other evidence they'd like us to provide. We had an architect, an engineering firm, provide what it would cost to rebuild. I believe you can materially rely on that evidence, the evidence was stated on the record in the prior hearing, so that can be adopted. So now, I'm going to hand out the transcripts, I am going to just read certain excerpts, I'm not going to read the entire thing because we'd be here all night. So I'd like to move into evidence, the transcript from the Monday, January 13 City Hall meeting. It's two parts. One is the transcript not with my notes on it, the second part of it is the highlighted portion, I did not add anything to this, there's also a certification from someone that transcribed it, I did not do that, we hired a third party. So I'd like to introduce that in evidence, and I have copies for everybody.
Hold on, he'll present it to us.
One for her, one, two, three, four, five, and the record. Sure, thank you. Thank you. No, it isn't. Thanks for playing. So I'm going to indicate where I'm reading from, to the best of my ability here, some of the stuff that I had written, I'm going to skip, I was going to start with page five, which outlines the quasi judicial, I believe, the city attorney did a great job as it relates to defining what that is. So I'm going to begin by reading an excerpt from page nine. This was Ms. Caroline Langford. I'm going to read it in part, I'm on the second paragraph of page nine. If that building has been able, has been let to deteriorate, become damaged or vandalized by virtue of neglect or abandonment, so this is our demolition by neglect, part of the code. And with respect to our guidance, demolition should be a measure of last resort when there are no other feasible alternatives. And then, we set out the criteria and the code to review. And so the first would be the historic or architectural significance of the building. The structure doesn't really have any significance beyond the fact that it's a contributing structure in both historic and national districts. She goes on to say, in the bottom of page nine, this building has no special significance associated with it. Page 10, she's continuing on. So criteria three would be difficult or impossible of reproducing the building because of its design, texture, material, detail, or unique location. This building would not be impossible to reproduce, and the location and setting is not unique to a frame vernacular structure. Again, midway page 10. So of the 146 frame structures in our local historic district, 35 of them were built between 1920 and 1929. This is one of those 35. She goes on to talk about the number six for the criteria that should be in review. Number six is whether the reasonable measures can be taken to save the building. She goes on in the middle of paragraph two on page 11. So I would really ask the board to review the proposed cost document that was within the application, because a lot of these items really have nothing to do with flooding. And you know, were, were, again, this is a misspelling, extent when the property was purchased two years ago, and they really aren't relevant to flooding, and it's no longer has caused flooding to be part of the use. She goes on in paragraph 11. So the last criteria is whether the building or structure is culturally property, again, it's a misspelling, capable of earning a reasonable economic return on value. She notes, in this case, it's kind of tricky. However, again, top of page 12, this determination is really complicated by the fact that this property was purchased in 2023 for a cost of $500 a square foot, when the market value at the time was $318 a square foot according to the property appraiser. So the property appraiser sets the 2024 just market value at $277 a square foot, and I can't, and I won't, render expertise in term of economic feasibility. The property was acquired at that price, which is significantly above the appraised value. And again, I'll skip in the middle of page 12 here, and again, the determination of economic feasibility is really complicated by the existential economic loss of purchasing, purchasing a property higher value than what it's worth. So respect to the current physical condition of the property, this board really needs to determine if the physical deficiencies in this property are the result of neglect and deferred maintenance in some other force. And that would be the board to determine whether that rises to the demolition neglect. Again, that's top of page 13. Ms. Langford continues to say, I think this is a hard one, right? Because what is the determination of feasibility? They go on to continue to question this throughout the entirety of the hearing, nobody really ever defines it, and that becomes problematic, because in the end, you'll see that they predominantly rely on this notion that somehow this was a neglected building, and it's demolition by neglect, when certainly Mr. Martieri did not cause a hurricane or flooding to come through his property. Now, going to go on to the bottom of page 14, which was our expert, Robin Hancock. She said, whether it was economically feasible to do so last year was never considered. Mr. Tony likes to do projects for the romance or less. She also goes on to say, on page 15, when describing the home, but basically, you have under laminate, which is like a one by 10 board, and then a sandwich is underneath, going the opposite way, another one by 10, and then you have hardwood on top. So all that sandwich layer of flooring is still wet, and there's nothing you can do to get out all the moisture, all the floodwaters out of all different layers. The plaster is on lath and is still saturated. We couldn't go in and do regular flood mitigation because of all the let paint. Again, the importance of this is to dispel the notion that somehow there was some mitigation that could be done to save the dwelling unit. Our experts refute that. Moving on to page 17, this is Mr. Martieri speaking, and I'm just going to read one sentence. So, I mean, that's why we enjoying, we don't enjoy tearing this stuff down. Again, another notion that Mr. Martieri isn't going around with bulldozers in the city, taking down things. Our expert on page 18 continues, when she's describing the dwelling unit. Okay, if you can imagine a brown paper bag, and it's sturdy as it's dry, and it's sitting in there, and the bottom gets wet, the bottom has six inches, it gets wet, it loses its integrity. She continues to say, after asking about FEMA requirements, she acknowledges that this is part of the historic, FEMA doesn't apply, there is a back and forth argument from the chairperson, who clearly doesn't understand the rule, that says, I'm not sure if you're correct. I live in the historic district, and I can totally understand what you guys are going through, because we got four feet of water in our house, and we are in the historic district, and FEMA never questioned whether we were in the historic district, so maybe you should go apply. He continues on, on page 19. Well, FEMA didn't make you know, it doesn't mention historic district at all. They didn't ask me, that is your, I am in the historic district, and I had the same kind of damage that you had. Again, there's a ton of personal evidentiary bias that went into the decision, I'm not sure what the chairperson's house and how he remediated had anything to do with how this house should be remediated, and that would violate the quasi judicial standard. 19, there was a question, and this is pertinent to what some of you all asked from the board here, how much water did you have inside your home? Robin, our expert, indicated that it was three feet. That's record evidence. Moving on to page 21, they ask Ms. Hancock if she's a contractor, she responds that that's correct. She also responds on the bottom of page 21 in regard to pricing. The pricing that comes up from trades and materials are always more than what I think it should be. And then, of course, anytime you remodel, there's always a surprise that comes along the way. But basically, this But basically, this, this house would have to be totally replaced from the roof down. Again, dispelling the notion that somehow magically this house can be replaced for a reasonable amount of value. She goes on on page 22. "The water is actually coming up from the bayou on the backside, over on the canal, and coming across where probably the house was built. You only had to deal with water coming in from the bayou in the past." Again, affirming, not me, our expert saying where the water came from, salt water from both sides. Then, we have a nice humble exchange from the chairperson, one of my personal favorites. "The flood would not have ripped out the plumbing." This is on page 28. We respond, "Oh, yes, it did. Chairperson, that's debatable." Mr. Martieri then goes on to say that the flood was what broke the camel's back, and our chairperson responded with, "Believe me, I know what floods can do." Page 31 from our expert, and again, this is from the hearing. She indicates when we're talking about restoring the property. "It's not like you can cut out four feet and just replace it. If I'm putting in a new foundation as far as the building code is concerned, I have to attach it to a firm structure, starting from the foundation and going up. We have to wind load it. This house obviously has been here a very long time and never was engineered for wind loading, but I know it's very hard." But again, back to the paper bag, it's great. It sits there. But the problem is the inches upon it getting wet. We have, we have replaced all of that and could replace all of that as to what's left. I'm not sure what's going to be eaten by termites. A thorough explanation as to why the house cannot be restored. Page 32, chairperson asks, "So is this house on blocks right now, or is it on foundation?" Our expert, "It's on brick piers." Chairperson, "Piers? And did I hear you say that it actually moved from the flood?" "Yes," we responded on the back. Everything is custom. So there was foundational shifting as it relates to that. Again, from our expert. She goes on on page 35 to talk about the foundational shifting. Ms. Hancock says, "Yes, just shifted. They're just little tiny pieces of brick. They're not solid. There's some stacked bricks under the house." And then another board member says, "Have you mentioned just..." I live in the neighborhood that had four feet of flood, six feet of flooding. And so many, you know, they got it. They got it walls down, and they're totally gutted, and they're selling it. And they're being purchased by contractors, whoever. A lot of work here is taking place illegally. Again, another thing into the record that should have no credence as to the decision of that board. Page 36, "It's hard, but whether it's an economical loss, it's just not feasible." That comes from our expert on page 36. Then a board member on the top of page 37 asks, "A question for Caroline. I think I saw the..." I haven't found it yet. I didn't print everything. The board wasn't even paying attention to the application presented by Mr. Martieri as exhibited there. Chairperson then on page 38, "Did you, did you get any other quotes, or is it just yours in reference to Robin? I like to get three quotes when I'm getting work done." Yet another personal opinion. Chairperson goes on, page 39. He's talking about restoration. Sure, yeah, and I understand that. I guess what I was wondering is if there was any other quotes. Perhaps these people, those quotes, would not feel like all this was necessary. That's in, in the one, I don't know that for a fact. Ms. Langford, bottom page 40. "I think it's disingenuous to say that nobody told you that the house wrecked right next to a bayou might flood." Ms. Langford says, page 41, "I have two comments, major comments on this presentation. Caveat emptor, buyer beware. And, and also due diligence. Because if you look up this list of proposed costs, you know, plumbing, kitchen, bath, the actual plumbing of the bath and the kitchen was not affected by flooding. Wiring, if your wiring outlets are not up to code, that's a different maintenance issue. Again, the flooring system is the biggest thing. You're telling me that you did not have an inspection done on a building you purchased to see what, what condition the flooring system is in? Wood is not a paper bag. Wood is wood." She continues, page 41. "When it floods, you let the water recede. You open the windows, you get fans, and there's no evidence."
Point of order. Mayor, his tone is too loud. As a professional, he needs to tone it down and present it in a manner that's professional from his attorney experience.
I'm okay with his tone. I just, I, I, I'm also, I get the, we get the story. I mean, we get it. So I think you've made your point about whether there was, you know, extraneous conversation in the, at the meeting. But I think you're kind of losing us here. But I think we all get it. So, do you want to just kind of go into more of your technical items of...
Can I read one more comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Bottom of page 48, this is the chairperson, and I'll end with this. "Yeah, I have a couple of problems, and we sort of talked about them already. If this application is for demolition is strictly because of the flood damage, I don't think the list of work that's needed is terribly inflated. No, no, I'm closing up public comment. So, again, I want to reiterate that the board used the completely improper standard as it relates to quasi judicial. Most of the evidence presented in here was not rebutted by the city as it relates to the evidence from the record that we presented. We met the criteria. It is not excusable neglect. We have a precedence because the home next door was allowed to be demolished. And with that, I'm open to any questions, and my client's here to answer questions as well."
I'm going to go into commissioner questions of the applicant. I'll start off. So, the... Okay, so you addressed the mitigation situation, which... Which I'm not sure how much relevance that has at this stage of the game. But let me ask you, did, you had discussed, you know, the rebuilding to be, to go before and meet some historical standards?
Absolutely.
Now, you saw the three options that the planning director put up on the screen. If, if number three were chosen, where you go back for the hardship exception, which you, given what you have here, you should qualify for, right? Would then you want to entertain the... You know, we've done things, there was, I saw where the HBB had done a demolition contingent upon reviewing the plans of the replacement.
At this time, there is no plans for replacement. It's just a pure demolition, it's going to stay vacant. That's the problem. There is no affirmative plans to rebuild specifically at this moment. So there wouldn't be plans to rebuild something because that is not...
So what's the urgency for the demolition?
The amount of lead, which I was unable to get to, it is a public health hazard. The floors and windows are full of lead. It needs to be removed. It is full of salt water, and it is structurally dangerous.
So that's what I was saying. Other than going, reading this transcript, are there any technical issues you want to bring before us? Which you just made...
Yeah, I just, I just want to reiterate that the criteria was firmly met. I mean, I don't expect the board this evening to read the entirety of the transcript, but it's pretty clear. This notion, Mr. Mayor, that we're going to go backwards and get a approval for economic hardship, I believe we met that approval before, and it was denied. So I would prefer not to go back and then come back to this board substantively and do this all over again. One of the issues that we have is the Heritage Board sometimes doesn't even meet the criteria for a quorum. So we could be talking about months. Then we come back here, and you're looking at five or six months, and it's, you know, it's rotting. There's nothing we can do about it. It needs to be removed, in our opinion.
Okay, I'm going to go to the other commissioners for questions. And then, again, we're going to have later, we'll have a motion, and then we can have even further discussion from, from the board and, and the public as well. So, Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate your, your very thorough presentation. You know, again, I think this is what it is. Nobody wants to demolish a historic home, including the applicant. Nobody here, that wouldn't make any sense. That goes against what we want to do here in Tarpon. But reality is reality. I think, you know, by not demolishing this home, by not giving that permit, we are creating a very clear economic hardship on this individual. And regardless of their means to do it, that should be irrelevant. It should be treated just on a case by case basis on the property. Again, I keep going back to this, to this, to this, to this notion. If it wasn't a contributing structure per FEMA with the damages it sustained, it would have been demolished, okay? And I think that has to be taken into consideration. I also, you know, don't think pushing this back to the Heritage, the Heritage Board is going to change anything. Again, it goes back to my original comments. There are just some tough decisions that come before this board on like appeal. And I think this, this, this is one of those decisions tonight. I don't believe, you know, and also what delaying the process would make any repair that much more expensive.
Excuse me, Commissioner, Commissioner. I think we're at questions of the applicant right now.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, when we get a motion, then we can go.
Oh, I apologize.
Can I just briefly respond, Mr. Mayor? So to the extent that the board wishes for my client to rebuild, it is functionally uninsurable. So even if he stroked a check for $600,000 to rebuild it, let's say, it would not be insurable. Subsequently, it would just flood again. So it doesn't have an economic purpose.
We understand.
I'm good, I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner DiDonato, do you have any questions?
Oh, I just don't think there's enough information to determine the financial hardship. I don't like some of the rules of FEMA either, but it's not for me to decide that. I don't, I don't have that ability, and I don't think any of us here do. I believe that that site flooded in the no name storm. I'm fairly sure. And why that wasn't revealed to the buyer, I don't know. But I'm, okay, fine.
I believe the response to that, and I don't have it in front of me, but the house was sold multiple times. My client acquired in 2022, I believe the later, it's in the slides here. The prior owner only had it for a brief period of time. I'm also a complex real estate attorney. There wouldn't be a seller disclosure requirement that would go back into the 90s that would just not be something that would be disclosed.
Because I know for a fact it flooded in the no name.
I have no knowledge of that, Commissioner. My client wasn't an owner, and we have no evidence to suggest that it did or didn't. Maybe it did, and maybe that's what weakened the structure substantially for this time. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I can understand why you wouldn't want to go back to HBB. Because you want to move on with this process, I understand that. And it's a, it's a tough situation all the way. But my understanding, Renee, I may need your help on this too. But my understanding is if you can prove the financial hardship, then they'll allow it to be demolished. And we don't have enough of that now, which is the reason why I believe staff is recommending that it goes back to HBB.
And in response to that, Commissioner, I'm not sure what else would be needed to prove the financial hardship. Again, if it was built out, just as presuming that it's a $400,000 build out, you're looking at plus $1,000 a square foot. That's the price of real estate in Manhattan. It doesn't make any economic sense. And that's what we struggle with. We're happy to, if we get some direct direction as to what they're looking for, the board was just giving random opinions. Is it an additional quote? Again, I'm happy to provide that. But what I don't want to be is stuck in this endless rut of going back, coming back here, going back, coming back here with no end in sight, and every day, the thing is just rotting. So, you know, to the extent that we are going to have to rebuild, and we're perpetually going to be denied a demolition permit, it's not doing any service for the rebuilding process.
Well, if we can, I'd like to go to Renee and explain why your department is recommending that there's not enough here to prove financial hardship. And if he goes back to HBB and they approve it, the process from that point should be fairly straightforward, I would think. But I'll look to your guidance.
You know, some of the comments, you know, even not having a comparison of what it would be, what it would cost to build a new structure, that's one of the kind of the comparison points. You know, building new versus, you know, repairing the existing structure and making it, you know, livable again. That is one cost, you know, one cost point. The, you know, a structural analysis, yes, you know, Robin's, you know, she's a contractor. A structural analysis, you know, that is a report that is sealed that says, yes, this is, you know, this is beyond, there's nothing to attach anything to here. Yes, I, you know, I understand their frustration. Intuitively, you look at this, and you're like, well, maybe this makes sense. But the evidence to base it on is, was lacking. And so, you know, the board is, I mean, I think they're reasonable if they have the information that they're looking for. I mean, I can't predict what they'll do, but, you know, that's, you know, it was not presented as an economic hardship exception, you know, that we normally, the process that we normally would go through. We haven't done very many of them. I can go back into records, and I can, I can find those and what those were based on.
So it sounds like to me, if you can prove that, and from the numbers that I saw and from what I've heard you say, I would think you'd be able to prove that.
Well, in respect for the Commissioner, two points. One, to the extent the board remands us back, I would like the board to make a decision that this was not neglected because I don't want to have to refight that process at the lower presumption of a hearing, which I think is fair. In response to proving that, we have an estimate that clearly shows that it would be about $400,000 plus dollars to remediate this, to get it back to where it is. That's record evidence in the exhibit by our engineering and contractor. There's 20 pages of it in here. I don't know what else that, that board would require.
Let me ask you, is that, is that one estimate, or is that the three? Do we get all three in there?
No, the board was referencing that there need to be additional estimates. I'm not sure that that's a requirement under any rule specifically as it relates to that. The city didn't provide any information to dispute the estimates validity. They were given an ample opportunity to question the contractor about line items, and they certainly did not. So I, I, I understand your concerns, but as a complex litigator, I just don't see anything to refute the evidence that I provided or a rule that I'm happy to accept that points me that I have to go out and spend $30,000 potentially getting estimates, crimping plans to showing that it's structurally unsound. There are, there is information, the record that talks about lead, that was done, that she can testify to. But again, I, you know, the cost of demolition is already going to be expensive. We're here because we're trying to demolish the one next door that was already approved and do a twofer, essentially. That's what we're trying to do. But this notion, I got to go have my client spend another hearing, two more opinions, crimping plans, that's nowhere listed in the rules, respectfully. And I'm happy to reevaluate that position to the extent the city attorney has a different one. But I'm not sure that's something that makes sense.
Part of the problem is, I see it is, is that the HBB district, and there are certain confines that require above and beyond. And I think that's what we're looking at here.
And I would point back, and again, I think Mr. Cuyas said it best as far as precedents. There was, there was no issue. In fact, staff recommended demolition of the house right next door. It's, there is no difference. So you're applying two sets of standards for whatever reason. I wasn't given an answer to that. I wasn't retained to go to that hearing. But certainly, that puts a question in my mind as to how that's supposed to work.
Renee, how would you deal with you on that?
I don't like mixing these things up. That was, that was reviewed, and it went through the review process. It was recommended for approval. To the best of our ability, that was like an old garage structure that at some point in the past was retrofitted into a living unit. And there was, there are different circumstances. They are not apples to apples.
Information I wanted to know, because I believe that that was at one time a garage.
Exactly. That was never properly permitted or anything, so.
That was used before my client's purchase as a dwelling unit. It was rented out for tenants.
I know one of the tenants, that's why.
Correct, so there was tenants in there. It was, it was rough, to say the least, and it became worse post-flood.
They are not, it's not an apples to apples comparison.
And let's not get into argument yet. It doesn't help. Do you have any more questions of the applicant?
I just think...
Okay, we're going to have time for conversation.
Okay, Commissioner Cuyas?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Stefan, first, I'm going to say your tone has been unprofessional, as if it comes off entitled, the way you ripped into our HBB board because you don't like some of their statements I didn't really appreciate. And, you know, your professionalism could have been much better in this presentation. And so, your credentials, you're an attorney, what else do you do as a professional?
I'm a complex real estate litigator by nature. I do real estate law, and I've been in front of a bunch of city boards as it relates to historical precedents as before.
Okay, and you purchase properties, you use trusts as well to purchase properties at all?
I don't think that's relevant. I'm not going to answer that question. I'm here to represent a client, not discuss my personal...
It's relative to the area, so it's just yes or no.
I object to the answer. I'm not answering the question. It's not relevant. It's, what I do in my personal time does not reflect on my client. What I do as a profession, certainly I'll get into.
So is that not a professional part of your...
My personal real estate holdings don't apply to this hearing. I'm not getting into that. My personal real estate holdings don't apply to this hearing, I'm not getting into that, sorry.
So, you talk about, we definitely don't have enough information. Would you agree to that? You think you have everything that's in front of us?
Absolutely, I think I meet that, and I I struggle to, as a litigator, find a rule that says that I did not meet the criteria. Please, I ask you, give me a rule that says I need to give you more, then I will give you more. But what else do you need? I I don't have any clear direction, that's what I'm struggling with, and neither does my client. We have no problem going back down, but we need, we need some guidance, and we, and the board needs some guidance. They they denied the application because of neglect, it's clear. If you read the transcript, that was the basis for it, and they also interjected things that just simply don't matter into the record to make a decision. There is evidence of what it costs, there should be a determination of, based on that, an economic hardship, is it an economic hardship? That if you spend an extra four hundred thousand dollars on this, does it present an economic hardship? I would argue, yes, again, it's in here, that it it comes out to more than a thousand dollars a square foot, it doesn't make sense.
How do we know that that's just not an inflated invoice or quote?
So you're accusing a licensed professional of inflating an invoice? I mean, I I.
I mean, people charge what they charge for any type of construction or work or anything like that.
Commissioner, it's not in the code that I have to provide multiple estimates. If the city would like to come examine and get an estimate, I have no objection.
Sir, I'm just asking you a question, do you think, you know, you think those are just, that one quote is the the fairest number?
I can, I don't think my client's under any obligation to pick the quote unquote fairest number. There is different types of work, it's very clear that my client does grade A restoration work. He's not a guy that's out there slapping it with a paint can and an unlicensed contractor. I mean, that that's proven.
Yeah, we're we're not saying that, so, we talked about this seventeen West Orange Street property, this yellow building. What, has this come in front of the H P B board recently at all?
No.
Nothing?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay. There's no preliminary discussions about this property whatsoever, that seventeen West prior to giving, donating it to the Ahepa?
It wasn't a donation, they paid substantially under market value.
Okay.
That's my response, it was not a donation, I I it's listed in the slides. They they purchased it for five hundred thousand, it's appraised at much more.
Now, you're talking, would you say something about this twofer and this garage structure? What were you referring to, sir?
What I was referring to that is is is, my client owns the parcel next door, and then the church, which was, you know, the mega structure. It is cheaper to demolish them both simultaneously. We have a demolition order as it relates to the uh, structure next door to this one, and I believe that that should be used as precedence for the criteria to demolish this one, it incurred the same level of damage.
That's the the one with the garage structure that they were referring to?
Correct, they they call it the garage structure, but it's not in dispute that there was tenants in there, your board just said that to the same. It's not like it was being used as a garage.
Okay, but you had an explanation, you heard from staff why that was decided by the H P B board and its condition and and moving forward and.
And that that was not, that was granted prior to the floods.
Right, okay, exactly, so I just, you understand that, sir, correct?
Yes, but it's it's substantially the same thing in our opinion, Commissioner.
So, we talk about, I mean, you just want to knock the building down and just keep the open property as is? I mean, there's really no conceptual thought about what you want to do, I mean.
Not at this time.
Really, your client has no knowledge whatsoever what he wants to do?
Commissioner, as as a reasonable human being, and so is my client, we have no problem with the commission stipulating that when and if you build a structure, you must go back and get that structure to be approved. I don't think that that's an unfair ask. If he wants to build a skyscraper, and this board denies it, that's fine. If he wants to build another craftsman, the board's got to approve it or the Heritage Board has to.
There's no code that allows a skyscraper over there.
I'm giving you an example, that's not his intent. He, the intent right now is, if he wishes to build, he does not care to have a restriction on the parcel ID that would require him to produce further applications to make sure it's Heritage Board's compliant beyond what the city requires for building permits, which I don't think is unreasonable.
They they have to have that anyway, that's.
Just implied.
Yeah, sure. Uh, this permits, you guys got approved to pretty much do a lot with the property back in, what, early January twenty twenty-four?
That's correct.
Why'd you wait so long? Why?
I don't think there's any reason why you may not wait so long. I mean, one of the reasons why, so conceptually, that was done before the hurricanes.
I know.
The permits were pulled, and it was not done primarily because resources were allocated to finishing a church on the corner. It's just, it's just the the way that it was.
Okay.
There's no obligation to immediately start work after pulling a permit. The intent was to do it, trust me when I say this, and I, and I, you can have my client up here to say the same thing. Had it not been flooded, it would have been finished the same standards of the church. We wouldn't be here, he doesn't want to demolish it, but he has no choice.
So, you know, I mean, uh, guys, don't beat around the bush with me. You talk about redoing that building, re, at the four hundred thousand dollars it would cost you, right? Plus the four hundred thousand dollars to purchase it, and you're sending that a thousand dollars a square foot, right? So what, you you guys have no conceptual idea of what knocking that down, building a whole nother structure, plus the four hundred you already paid for that purchase, that price would be? What your square foot would be at that new building or whatever?
At this time, it wasn't taken under consideration. There's no, there's no plans at this time, there's nothing in the record that indicate that, my client testified that. He does certain things to beautify the area. I mean, it, that's, that's relevant by seeing what this, the church improvement has been done, and that has been in front of this board a bunch of times prior to his ownership, and the board has graciously allowed certain requirements to do so. It it makes sense conceptually because of, for lack of a better word, the monopoly he owns on the corner. He's got that one, he's got the other one, and he and he wants to continue it along. I don't know what he's gonna do, but we're willing to restrict that. If I told you I was gonna build a tennis court, I wouldn't be willing to restrict that, that's not his intent. I'll I'll do any reasonable restriction forward looking in the order.
All right, so this bill, this board says you, you know, you knocked this building down, but you still have to build a vernac- a vernacular style building that's, you know, looked like something like that before, is that gonna be an issue?
No objection, as long as it's clarified in the order as to what that states. And I want specific clarification, because I don't want to be uh, appealing an order. So if you would like to list a justice you set, Commissioner, I have no problem with that. I just don't want the board to say you must build a structure in X amount of time period. You can restrict what's being built there, that's no objection. I I assure you, my client's not playing games, it's not in his nature.
I'm not saying they're playing games, but you, we're talking about precedents that we set, you can bring up other stuff, but I'm on this board making this decision in front of me, that went in front of the H P B board, not in front of us at that time.
I agree, and and I think the H P B board used the incorrect standard. I'm not saying you are, Commissioner, I'm just saying the evidence is very clear. They indicated it was demolition by neglect, it it is not. I'm not sure how that even qualifies.
Can I, can I ask Renee another, one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
Renee, is there any way for us to find, because I, the more I think, I believe the house next door is up, up on blocks, not very, it's not on the ground.
I I don't personally know that, you can ask my client, I I don't want to speak to that.
Pretty sure as I remember it is, and 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 I'm I'm sure that one fifty Reed Street, pretty sure, I but I need to verify that through our records, that was a garage. And somehow it got turned into an apartment.
So it is a separate parcel, Commissioner, and that's not in dispute as a.
Well, my my point is, if it's a garage and not a home, does that make the FEMA requirements different?
That, it's, regu- it was.
Or that's not germane?
It's it's still not germane, yeah, the FEMA requirements still aren't germane.
All right.
It was, you know, there's no permit record at all of how that became.
Okay.
A lot, how it became a struck, you know, a living unit at all.
Okay.
My client purchased those individually, Commissioner, it was, it was the church primary building and then then consequently to the right, and then additionally to the right.
I've actually been in, I know exactly which house it is, so, but I I I do believe it was a garage, I don't believe.
I can't testify to that, I I take your word for it, Commissioner.
I just wanted to know if that made any difference, I don't know if it does or doesn't.
I concur.
Let's go back to Commissioner Cuyas.
I'm not sure if I heard it right, but I wonder, was there something about a page thirty-six and work done illegally? Was there anything that I heard, something like that?
So there there was a, and let me read it back if you don't mind.
Sure.
Okay. Page thirty-six, Commissioner, was uh, Ms. Hancock talking about the financial hardship? I can read it if you'd like.
Sure, whatever gets to the part that there was something.
Yeah, I I don't believe that that was it, I I can certainly look for it quickly, Commissioner. I think it was in reference to the board indicating, and Ms. Hancock going back and forth uh, regarding that a lot of people are just doing this the wrong way, and and that's what it was about.
Correct, yes.
It wasn't saying that we're we're doing that, of course not, there hasn't been a substantial.
Because you got the permits, so I just.
It was an observation that there was a lot of work being done in the area that potentially did not have permits.
Which, which in my opinion has no, you know, evidence, evidentiary value as it relates to this application.
But, sir, you you admit your clients bought numerous properties in the historic area, right? With with all the different restrictions and codes, which, you know, I have my own opinion about them, you know, so, but, I just, you're really sold that, you know, it's gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars to renovate that whole building?
Commissioner, I have to, I have to rely on the expert, I'm not a contractor, I can't quote that. When I have an expert that gives me an invoice, I can materially rely on it, and as I did, and so did my client. That's his go-to contractor, she's not, it's in the record, again, I'm happy to find it. She's not in business with him, right? So there's, there's no incentive for her to say she has some type of joint venture, that's in the record evidence. I I just, I understand where you're coming from, but it's not in the rules that there must be multiple quotes. If it is, please point me to it, and then I will provide that, and I'm sure they'll be substantially in the same realm of what this is, as most contractors would do it. And he has the right to choose the contract he wants to choose and choose the quality of work that he wants to choose. He he doesn't have to go, for lack of a better word, you know, cheap, which he's never done, as evident by the church structure, uh, when replacing things. He chose this contractor, and she even testifies, Commissioner, that it would be beyond this scope, because once she gets in there, it's gonna be worse, so, it's it's above four hundred thousand, it's not me, it's in the record.
I mean, it's uh, I I I'm not sure how much I can weigh that decision, that that testimony right there, honestly, Mr. Stefan, and so.
It's not my testimony, Commissioner, it's record evidence from the prior hearing, it's not my personal opinion.
It's just a document, and and then her following up on it, there's no pictures of anything, I mean, there are, are there any pictures of the inside of the home and the quality of it?
That's a requirement.
I know it's not required, but you want to build trust with us, sir, so there's a difference. You want to build trust with us and this board about setting a precedent, but you do the bare minimum. The bare minimum, it looks like, and then you 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 go about, you know, not answering questions, that, you know, this is an open forum.
Testify as to what the inside of the building looks like.
Yeah, hi, um, I'm Tony Martieri.
You pulled the microphone, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Down, yes.
I'm Tony Martieri, and please ask me whatever questions you like.
Sir, it's really gonna cost four hundred thousand dollars to renovate that, redo that building, that.
What, how? Let me, let me just say this. I just renovated, and honestly, I didn't know what I was getting into, that church.
You did a great job.
Well, thank you. If you had to guess at a square foot price to renovate that church, what would you say?
I don't know, I saw what you listed it around, but I didn't see what it went for or anything like that, so.
That was fairy tale, and, you know, whatever you guys said it for, you know. I will tell you today, because I'm in the process of trying to build a home here, if you could build anything under three, forget about three hundred dollars a square foot, those days are gone. I mean, you're looking at four to five hundred dollars for any kind of quality construction, period. So if you just take a thousand square feet at four hundred dollars, what does that come to? You got it.
Mm-hmm.
Why did I pay four hundred thousand dollars for that building? Two reasons. We love Tarpon, I think the church is the best location in town. The building turned out fantastic. Initially, I thought whatever you call a garage would be a fantastic cottage for guests who came to the house. The other house I was dying to get, because it becomes a compound for the church. And you could build historic, doesn't have to be old to be historic. People don't come to Tarpon to see, this is a hundred and twenty-five years old. And what makes it specific and and characteristic is the porch. Who cares? They come because it's historic, it feels historic, and and you enjoy being there. My purpose in whatever you call the garage was always a residence that we bought. And actually, it was an income stream. Until it got, it was so messed up, the building, that it didn't make sense to fix it up. And then the floods came, so I mean, but to me right now, we, I, when I drive down Orange Street, you know, and they knock down those old homes, and they built these historic looking buildings, orange and wherever the bike trail is, they look great, and they're functional, and people are living in them. So historic means different things to different people, okay? And all I'm saying is that we want to preserve the historic nature of Tarpon, but old doesn't mean historic anymore. You know, especially if it's not up to the standards that people could live in comfortably. And you can only maintain it for a few more years before they're demolished, because today, we build with better materials, we build with longevity in mind. So we're dealing with different, different world, you know, and you got covenants that say one thing, but the realism is, we live in this area. You know, I I bought my father a home years ago, forty years ago in Sarasota, they never got hit by a hurricane. You know, and we lived on a canal. So the moral of the story is, what we're seeing today is real. So if you have foundations that aren't six feet up, you're, you know, you're in trouble in a lot of cases. So just prepare for it, but, you know, you could have standards, make the standards, move on to the realism of what's going on to preserve it. But, you know, something's gotta give, but today, you're not building at two hundred dollars a square foot for anything. Even low standard buildings, forget it. So that's, that's really where we're at. So if we're gonna contribute to a society, and we could do it, we want to just make it better, bring it up to the standard so people could actually live in it, and it benefits the city and the neighborhood. That's our standard.
See, you know, I think you should have came up and talked a lot sooner, sir, so I appreciate it. You're very knowledgeable, and you gave a a very articulate answer behind your construction and intent and and reasoning, so, I appreciate it.
That will thank you guys, yeah.
Is, um, I'm gonna just, like I, like I said, I'm gonna pretty much just, I appreciate it. I I feel like there there's just some more information that needs to be given out. You know, there's, I feel like it was just, it was the minimum that would need to be presented, and, you know, a a lot of, go ahead, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, question. I just want to say regarding Robin Hancock, my my contractor, we've worked with a lot of contractors. And it's easy to get that title contractor today, I think as you all know. And so, it's like going to good dentist, you know, if you go to good dentist, everybody's a dentist. But you try second and third and fourth, and all of a sudden you say, I'm going back to my original one. I will tell you today that if you had to have anybody, and I'm not selling her services, build anything for you, and you want specifics at the end that you have at the beginning, this is the lady you want on your team, period. She's done work for us, she's doing work for us. And you know that the price she's gonna quote me is what you're gonna pay at the end, because she's done her homework. And I have a lot of contractors I'm working with, I can't say that about a lot of people. So, I I I think the numbers we gave you aren't gonna get much better. Because to me, if somebody, if I know they're in the ballpark on a square foot basis or what, whatever the the vehicle is they're quoting me on, and somebody comes in lowball, that makes me really nervous. That's why you need three bids, you need a high, you need a medium, and you need a low, because you always question the guys down here.
Mr. Martieri, let's, Commissioner, do you have any more questions? Because we're, we're gonna have deliberations for more statements.
No, uh, we've got everything answered, thank you both, and I have no further comments, thank you.
Vice Mayor. Questions, please.
Yes, I don't mind who answers this. Um, do you think it would have been better if you had somebody who has familiarity with um, flooding and saltwater and mold remediation?
You mean before I bought the house?
No, I mean before you went before the H P B board.
You know, honestly, I I don't, this is my, and really, wherever you're, yeah, I uh, I have the utmost respect for anybody who's gonna donate their time to any commission, okay? Or whether it's historic or not. I think the levels of experience versus an opinion are different things. I think in the historic district, because, you know, what I could see is everybody has a different opinion of what should be done, what they'd like to see. And so, um, would I bring anybody different to the historic board at that point? I think you almost need a structure, a construction administrator, and you need people that understand everything you're talking about. You know, you're talking about FEMA, you're talking about construction costs, you're talking about floods, you got a lot of variables. And so that's why I say I I personally, I I don't think. And so that's why I say I, I personally, I, I don't think the people are construction experts when you're coming historic. And I think they're trying to preserve historic and God bless them. But I, I, I would take bets. If someone wants to bet me on numbers and, and what has to be built, I'd take that bet. That, that's, that's all I'm saying. So if we say this is what we need to build what we built and everybody says, wow, that's great for the community, that's what we wanted. These were originally bought, I'm telling you, for cottages that could really create a compound for the church and it would be built historically. So that the neighborhood grows. And I think that's what, you know, that's what we're, we're trying to, uh, attempt to do here.
So there is some type of plan, it's just not...
Could I tell you right now, the, the only plan is, we, we haven't sat down with a, with an architect. We just needed a vehicle to do it. So anyway, I board you guys. Thank you very much.
Do you have any more questions?
Yeah, of course.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. I got it. I mean, if we need to bring him back?
Thank you. So my question was more so tailored to the HPV board. I'm not knocking them in any which way, shape, and form. But they have their expertise in vernacular, in windows, in wood types, in, um, because I, I've watched enough of their meetings. This, what happened, was a specialty event. And my point that I'm trying to make to you is, you're doing a presentation, whether it's to HPV or to us, don't you think that you should have somebody who would be able to be your expert in delivering what should be repaired versus what should be removed for whatever reason? Because you're not skilled, and I'm not saying this...
Absolutely, I agree with you, Commissioner. I can't testify to that.
Right, so I'm, I'm listening to a, a lot of reasons of why you should have done this or why you could have done that. And, and the bottom line is, if you had that person there, it, it would have answered all of these questions before you give me your answer. Hold that thought. How did you find Robin Hancock? Or how did he find it?
Mr. Martieri does a, a lot of rehab as it relates with her, through a variety of projects throughout Pinellas County.
So has she worked for him numerous times?
Yes, to my knowledge, yes.
Okay. Are you aware of what kind of reputation she has?
I can't speak to her reputation. I, it's not something that I, that I'm aware of.
Am I allowed to speak?
I'm not sure reputation evidence has any credence to this.
Okay. I'm, I'm just asking, you know, um...
To go backwards, Commissioner, she...
I wasn't saying that in a negative, by the way.
No, and I, and I, I am not, uh, uh, I can't speak to her reputation. I can tell you, Mr. Martieri's reputation is known for grade A restoration, even sometimes to his detriment where it's too expensive. This one isn't going to cut it. Additionally, in response to why Ms. Hancock isn't here, my understanding was, is that I could not supplement additional information. So I relied on the record evidence testimony. And at length, she goes into the detail, you know, I, I read some of it, where she describes the floor as a paper bag. She personally investigated that. I'm not sure of a requirement, respectfully, Commissioner, that requires a line of experts to come in and, I need a flooring expert, I need a window expert. I'm not sure. She has the credentials, I don't believe that's in dispute.
I wasn't bringing that up in the negative.
I understand, I'm just simply answering the question.
I, I'm just touch base a little bit. I do know her very well. That's all I want to say, okay? Um, but I'm not allowed to speak about it, so, um, my question back at you is, when you come before any board, this is a specialty-type item. And in order to defend the difference between, um, you know, negligence versus a natural disaster, all I'm saying is that when you bring somebody who has knowledge of whether something should be removed and, and destroyed or whether they should be built back, there has to be someone who has many times made that determination.
I, I think she would fit into that criteria, Commissioner. And again, I'm not going to read the entirety, but her, but it was, it was, the, the, the actual hearing lasted over an hour. She was there, she did answer these type of questions as it relates to that. Again, I'm not going to read the record. I submitted that into the record. You know, I, I feel very strongly she meets that criteria. It's not like she was, you know, a subcontractor. I, I don't know what else to say on that point. I mean, to the extent the board wishes for us to get additional quotes, I, I don't think that that is listed in the rule. And respectfully, I have not heard anything from the city that would indicate they have a quote that would be opposed to our quote as far as cost. Certainly, they can present that evidence, but they have not done so. And, and when we get back to dealing with people discussing substantively what is demolition by neglect, I would argue that you don't need an expert to acknowledge that it's not neglectful to have floodwater destroy your home. That doesn't require an expert, that's common knowledge. So again, she did testify to that, but the board relied, where I get the heartburn, Commissioner, on their personal experience of how they would have restored the home. And that's just simply not the standard. And they came to an, an irrational conclusion of an oh-for vote on basically neglect. And that, that's the issue we have. I don't know how I can overcome that, Commissioner, respectfully. I'm open to ideas.
I can't give you that answer.
Okay, so, um, let's go to public comment. Are there any public comments on this issue? Austin, do we have any remote comments? Austin?
There's no online comments.
Okay. So let's come back to the board for, um, to entertain a motion.
May, may I?
Yeah.
Make a statement before we...
Sure.
Sorry. I do want to state unequivocally my experience with their contractor, Robin Hancock, is she's, she's fantastic. I, I want that in the record because I don't, the tone of some of the conversation makes it sound like that just isn't the case. So I, I do, I do want that in the record.
Okay, I'm going to speak, I will speak on that when it's, uh...
I, I do believe that, I think the problem and the disconnect is, yes, there was a lot of testimony given, standing at a podium or standing at a microphone. What they didn't have was a report with pictures, with data, and with information. And I think if they had that, you may have got, I can't handicap how they would do, but I think there's a path from A to B here, so...
So, uh, Austin?
Uh, yes, sir?
Yeah, are there any remote comments?
No, there are no online comments.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's come back to the board. Let, let's, uh, I, I'm looking to entertain a motion.
I would motion to approve the appeal and grant the demolition permit.
Second.
Okay, now let's go back to Commissioner comments, Commissioner Banther.
Thank you, I was kind of cut off, so I want to say some things. First off, Robin Hancock, if you, if you have done any real estate work in Tarpon of any extensive nature and if you have done any construction work, you've heard of her. She's a, she's a, she's a female contractor, one of, one of the few in Tarpon Springs. Been here for a very, very long time. I've purchased one, one, one of her buildings before and, and she's top-notch. I would, I would hire her tomorrow. Me, 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 me and my partner manage about thirty million plus in, in real estate assets. I have been part of the biggest demolition permit issued in Dunedin for the, for the, for the, for the Kellogg Mansion. I restored a building downtown. All this to tell you, what she's quoting is on the low end. It, 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 though, 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 though it is. Anybody with any real estate or construction experience can look at that and, and, and just tell you that. I think, I think some of this, the reason why this was denied is, I believe in my extensive experience with, 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 uh, city boards. I've served on this board and on this board before. People that come before the board with certain means, there's a certain bias against them. And that's just part of life, but that should not be the case. I believe if this was a different applicant, if this was Yaya, if, if you will, or a retired person, this would have been a whole different story. But, but, but here, but here, but, 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 um, but here we are tonight. Again, if this was not a, a contributing structure, it would have been demolished without a permit from, uh, from, uh, 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 from the hurricane. And I think if we don't want to issue that, we are just simply throwing the ball back to a, 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 like, lower board. It's going to come right, and then it's going to come right back to us or, and then maybe to a higher court. We have to make that, that tough choice tonight. And, uh, I, and also to ask this applicant, if, if they're denied across the board, to rehab the property, again, in the condition it's in and not, you know, tear it down and build something else according to our guidelines here. They can't build it out whatever it is they want. And another flood comes and we're here again next year. So again, I, I think all the evidence, again, I've, I've sat through appeals before from the Heritage Board, both on the board itself and on this board. I've never seen so, so much, so, so much evidence presented. And again, this is not to say that the Heritage Board aired per se. I was not, I, I was not part of that meeting. And I, and I, I think Commissioner, or sorry, Vice, or sorry, Vice Mayor Eisner brought up a good point that that board is not specifically construction experts. They are in charge and rightfully so of the overall historic preservation. And so I understand their reluctance to issue a, a, a demo permit, I do. So I think it's our job here tonight and I hope my colleagues can go along and, and, and grant this permit. Thank you.
I, I actually skipped myself, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go next and then I'll go down the line. You know, I, well, let's, let me talk about Robin Hancock. Uh, I've used Robin Hancock. She's exemplary, so I, she, I have zero issues when it comes to Robin Hancock. I mean, this, the pricing, um, you know, I looked at, I've looked at new construction and, and Mr. Martieri is exactly right. You can't even, you can't build a shack for two fifty today, a square foot. Everything's, everything's super expensive. You know, I, I want to back up on, in Commissioner Koulias, you made a really good point at the very beginning of your comments with that, you know, precedent and standards. I think it is, I think it's very important right now. I don't think this is the first, we're going to hear of these. I looked at, uh, I was looking to purchase some property and I looked at four homes in the Fruit Bowl District. And I wouldn't touch them. I had cash to rental, to renovate them, so I didn't have to go get a mortgage to do it, which I doubt that any bank would finance any of the, any renovations of any of these properties at their elevation. I just don't think it's possible. And, but yet, to put money into these properties and, and then to just wait for a possible reoccurrence of this is, is, is crazy. And so, but my concern, and I expressed this to the, uh, planning director and the, um, city manager is that we need to set some standards as to how this process, process should go, given that this is kind of like the first one coming up to us. So, you know, um, you, you know, I would have probably liked to have seen, you know, maybe a, a, a report from a structural engineer on the integrity of the, of the, the property. I don't doubt that it's impractical to try to rehab that property and again, wait for it to get flooded again. So, you know, if, and, and not to, not to disparage the, uh, the Heritage Board, but, I mean, ever, and like they, like Commissioner Eisner said, they, they, you know, they know about asking about, you know, some molding or windows or doors. But oftentimes, they get very lost. And I've, I experienced them, I went before them, I'm not shy to say it. I had to go before them and, and then had to appeal it to the Board of Commissioners and it was completely overturned. Uh, I got a five-o vote from the Commissioners and, and had a, uh, I think it was a five-to-one vote by the Heritage in the other direction. You know, there's, there's, uh, standards for demolition, right? I, I think they were on one of the pri, uh, subsequent screens, you know? And I don't, I didn't see in this where the standards were applied. I saw where, again, they got into issues about, you know, neglect and all that, which to me is irrelevant. We're here now, um, and I don't think your client neglected anything. That was Mother Nature did that. It, it wasn't neglect. And the, and the damage didn't happen by neglect, the damage happened by a storm. So, um, so much time spent on that seemed, uh, to be wasted conversations. So, you know, my question tonight is going to be to myself is whether we vote on the demolition or we vote on the number three to go back to the Heritage Board. But to go back to the Heritage Board without some standard of, of what we're sending you back there to do, seems like that, as much as I'd like to go along with, um, Ms. Vincent on that, I don't, I don't see what, going back to tell them what, to go back through this again? So, uh, I'd like to hear from the other Commissioners and, and, you know, hear, hear the motion and make a decision, so, um, we already have a motion. I, I, excuse. So let's go to Commissioner DiDonato.
This is one of the times where you really want to be last, but anyway. Sorry. The, the motion, as I understand it, from, from this end of this big room is, is to vote for the demolition. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have the advantage or, or should I say the disadvantage of actually being in that house? And I have a hard time weighing that rehabbing it, if you don't take it up, makes, it makes absolutely no sense at all to me. But yet, on the other hand, I, I respect the HPV board and, and, and if they felt they needed more information, I, I think it should be there, so... And since our records don't go back to prove that that was actually a garage or a carport, which I firmly believe it was a carport, I guess there's not much we can do about that either. So having said that, then I will listen to the rest of the three Commissioners.
Commissioner Koulias? Ms. Vincent, you, you talked about the hasn't seen the HPV board and would item three basically tell them, come back with pictures, come back with additional information that would make us a little bit more comfortable in making that decision?
They, they were definitely looking for additional information. I, and I understand the applicant's frustration with not knowing what that is. I wanted to go back and see what standards we've used in the past, what's been submitted, you know, uh, some sort of structural analysis. Even, even if, you know, Ms. Hancock can expand on, you know, and present the information in a, you know, a packet of information of the interior, photograph the interior, document, you know, get the information that, that they're looking for. I do want to also state that the estimate that she provided did include elevating the structure. So they're not, the proposal is not to elevate it at its existing grade. It was to, I mean, keep it at existing grade. It was to renovate and elevate the structure. That was included in their, in that estimate, so...
Let me say that again, you're saying that...
The estimate that was provided, the estimate provided by the applicant included elevating that structure.
Okay, so it was definitely going to be elevated?
Yes.
It makes no sense at all to remain like it is to me.
It, it...
Okay.
Here's what we're doing now. I mean, you had staff give a recommendation of, of item, of number three, I believe.
That, that would be, that, yes, that, that would be the, my recommendation is to go back to the HPV. That is only a recommendation, I mean...
And Mayor, you're the deciding vote here. It's, it's clear as we see our seconds and potentially with, with Frank, um, or Commissioner DiDonato. If we approve this demolition, then you're going to have people come up who are going to want their, their houses demolished without, you know, providing some of the additional information that our staff is requesting to make the HPV feel comfortable. Hold on, hold on. And as far as, I, I, but as far as... And as far as, I, I, but as far as, you know, this, I get it, nobody wants to go back and forth, but it's a process. No one's gonna get any special treatment here. No one. And, you know, you're gonna allow this precedent now, that anybody can come up, say their historic structure's done, you know, uh, I, I'm, I'm sure they're a qual-, a great contractor, you know, I'm not saying that. But we're gonna have contractors write up, you know, quality contractors write up numbers and, and, you know, without additional documentation, that leaves our HPP Board, you know, she talked about, we can set conditions now right now, right? Ms. Vincent, to go back for item three with the conditions that we could state, and they would have to do it, correct?
Are you talking about what they would have to submit?
You have to provide, yes.
I mean, you, you can. I, I would rather work with the applicant and the building department and, you know, look at what we've required in the past and.
Okay.
I don't wanna stand up here and ask for something that's completely off base.
No, and I just wanna make sure that's what you mean by looking back, you'll, that's the route we need to go.
Can I respond to you?
That's the route we need to go.
Any question, then you.
Because, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So, yeah, don't always presume what you think I'm thinking. Okay, so, what, what I would, I, and I'm not adverse to what you're, you're saying. What I'd want from this board, and I think what the applicant needs, is specific direction on what, if he goes back, what is expected of him? If, 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 if they don't, so let's say that, uh, a, a, a structural engineer report, um, like, like whether, you know, even, you know, interior or whatever, I, I just, I don't want to take this man down a road that is, is nebulous, right? And so, and again, setting those standards, because you're right, we're gonna have more of these people come here, and we need to be able to have some, and, and, and by what we're doing today is a precedent, that we set, that we're gonna require certain standards. But I think we're gonna have a lot of these, I really do. I, again, I was in that Fruit Bowl District and I saw houses, and they, they're just not gonna get rebuilt. Um, there's gonna have to be something done to them. And if they are rebuilt, I'm telling you, I, I'm really concerned about what the intent of people rebuilding these houses, there, that's, to me, is more problematic than the, the demolition, because the people that are buying some of these houses, I've seen it in, in, again, in the Fruit Bowl, they're buying them at, you know, uh, land value, almost just land value, and then they're putting minimal money into them to, to, to fix them up. They're not intending to live in them, they're gonna all be, um, uh, uh, you know, either low-end rentals or Airbnbs, and they're just, and, and those neighborhoods are not gonna be the same. So, but I, I'm, I'm really getting off on a tangent, I, I apologize. So, um, I just think if we're going to send him back, it needs to be specific and direct. I don't want him going through what he went through, again, talking about, um, you know, what he should've done or could've done, you know, in mitigating anything. So, can you, can you help us, Renee, with those specifics?
It, it's going to have to be some type of a structural report with evidence included in the report that you can read and understand, and it needs to be from a, a professional. And I, I, I mean, I think, I think Ms. Hancock can probably produce that. What they got was one sheet of paper with some numbers on it and no other evidence backing that up. That's, that's the gap. Even though she testified to that, that this is so, we need a report with evidence, pictures. I think that's, you know, and I'm channeling the HPP, that's what they're asking for.
And that seems reasonable to me.
And then we can also take that, you know, we can look at it, our building department has cost to means data of, you know, the, where we can look at what a new cost would be for a similar structure, we'll have a comparison, we can, and then, you know, to me, that should be enough to make a decision.
You will work with this applicant?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
I, I can, that I can live with.
Don't, we got, okay.
So, do we need to amend the motion?
No, 'cause now it's, the motion's just to go with the one.
Well, that was, the motion was to just straight up demolish?
Yes.
Yes.
To approve the application.
Can, can we have, can I, well, let me ask the City Attorney. Can, uh, we ask that, uh, Commissioner to pull that motion and then make a motion with the conditions?
The maker and the second wanna remove theirs, they can. Can I speak first before?
I, I just think this is absolutely ridiculous.
Yeah.
This is absolutely ridiculous. I, I, I just have to be honest. Absolutely ridiculous. Well, whatever, you want me to pull it, I'll pull it, no problem.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking you.
You wanna go down, whatever road you want to tonight.
Point of order, we have two things, we need to extend the meeting.
Yes.
Motion to extend the meeting till eleven thirty PM.
Second.
Roll call.
Wait, 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 I didn't hear that part.
I, I would like a time, sir. I'm not gonna stay here till, till, until, until one AM.
Eleven thirty.
Not gonna do it.
Once we get past this item, the rest of them are, are.
Yeah, that's what we think.
Okay. Um, roll call to extend.
It was just extended.
To extend to eleven thirty.
I was, the, the motion fifteen twenty.
Who's second?
It was to eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty?
All right. No, we wanted to make a little.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you. So, I was listening, there's a lot of good comments being made here, but even if you give more pictures, as Commissioner Kulyas was saying, um, it's not gonna help, because the people that are looking at it are not familiar with what mold remediation and flood restoration is. This falls back on, I remember a pariah commissioner who claimed he was an expert because he handled his mother's one loss. These people are good at what they do, but they're not good at this, so unless you had somebody here that was a flood restoration person, they're not gonna know. Um, even if you appeal, you have to have facts. Um, what we could do down the road on all of these, this is just jumping off for a second, before anybody rents a house or does anything with a house, sells it, we could request they have an air sampling and a mold sampling to see that it's safe for someone else to go into. My comment about Robin, which I wasn't able to make before, I worked with her on the Board of Adjustments for many years. She is a stellar, top-quality, um, contractor. Um, I, I wouldn't actually call her extremely knowledgeable about restoration, because even the best contractors out there, this was a once-in-a-lifetime item. Um, Surf Pro and all the others, they do rip out, they don't do putback. Robin is a putback person, she's an expert at what she does. But, um, I, 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 being, I was laid up and I couldn't help my own house, my wife did most of the work, and my crew, I was an advisor to Robin. Okay, so I actually spoke with her and I gave her my expertise in how to treat some of these houses, because they were unique. These, if you have a standard constructed house, you, you rip out, like was said earlier, sheet rock, you treat all the studs, you put an encapsulator on it, and you start putting things back. These particular houses cannot be done like that. The construction back in those days were just second to none, it was built without any guidelines, without any construction knowledge, people just nailed things together. All of the screws and nails or whatever they used that was hit with salt is going to corrode and fall apart. This is what people don't understand. Um, many people put bleach on it, it's still corrosive. Um, most of the money that you make when you're doing restoration is in the demo part of it, it's not in the putback. So, her price, that whatever she quoted, she's not only honest, but she was underquoting it, because you only get twenty-five percent of the loss of what you're putting back. Most of the money is made in the seventy-five percent part of the, uh, demo that you do. So, mold grows in twenty-four hours, within three days, it, it's just everywhere. And I, I can read this thing to you, but it destroys the wood. It becomes embedded in the wood, there's no way for you to, uh, rectify it without removing all the wood and replacing it, which means knocking down the house. So, all of these factors, I'm sure, as, as good as the HPP was or is, none of this is in their wheelhouse, you know? I, I listened to one person, you know, say that they had a flood, and they, you know, they did this or that, that has nothing to do with another property. Unless they've done thousands and thousands of flood restoration jobs and are familiar in it, with it, they're not classified someone who's knowledgeable. With all the restoration I've done, I am not an expert, expert in, in the business. You have to be doing this on a day-to-day basis. So, my comment, you know, with this whole thing is, I don't think it should go back to them. I, I think we should be doing, um, option two, and just allowing them to dispose of this health hazard, um, because we really don't need to precipitate and make this go on longer and longer, because you're just making them a more costly, uh, removal, because that mold is just gonna continue to grow through the humidity, you, they, they have no air conditioning there, and if they turn the air conditioning on, it, it would spread the mold spores through the whole house. So, all of all, what I'm listening to is, as, uh, Commissioner Banther said, it's, it's nonsense, we should just not let them knock it down and say it's, it's a loss. If they wanna rebuild it, let them rebuild something that looks similar to this, only elevated. But for now, we should just let them remove the damaged issue. Nobody did this with negligence, nobody left this, um, just, just because they didn't care. Um, and, and many of the properties that we looked at, my crew, when they were down here, did lift off the, off the, uh, foundation and shifted. My own property shifted. So, you know, you had thousands of pounds of water weight sitting on, on, around your house. It shifted your property. Either it floated it or it shifted it. Most of these properties that were built around there were just sitting on cinder blocks, there was no foundation poured, so, you know, it's gonna float. It did break pipes. I, I've been on jobs that pipes broke. So, I'm trying to share with you some of the knowledge that this is, this is not just a, uh, a, a, a run-of-the-mill, let's just, you know, do this. These things become very intricate, and that's why I'm asking the questions. You should have an expert here to determine what is protocol for this particular property. And it is not for the Board of, uh, Board of Adjustments to decide, it's not for the, uh, HPP to decide, and it's definitely not for, I don't wanna go down the list of what all these occupations are up here, but it, it is not mold remediation and flood restoration and the destruction of saltwater does.
I, okay.
I'm just saying what I know.
Yeah, you, you don't have to convince me, this is a decision from the board, so.
You, you still currently have a motion and a second for, uh, do we have any, well.
I'd like to say, I mean, I get exactly what Commissioner Eisner's saying, but what's gonna happen, it might not be the current contractor coming before us again on another application, could be someone completely different, completely different applicant, someone who doesn't put quality where, I, I don't know. I know they do quality work, but what I'm saying is, they brought the bare minimum. Staff has even said, the HPP, they agreed to go with item three. Couple more weeks to knock the building down, a couple more months, if the building's gonna get knocked down, it's gonna get knocked down. But if we go approve this removal without any extra analysis or, you know, what needs to be required, then we're gonna have to allow for a lot of other people. And the bare minimum to present, you know, a sheeted invoice, I get it, but that's not enough. And, and it's not much more to ask them to go back again with staff who's gonna work with them to make sure they're treated fairly, just like anybody else, to provide what they need to, for an HPP Board, to bring in front of us and get it right, with everything in front of us, and not just, you know, an invoice.
May I give you a little bit of facts?
Go ahead.
Initial stage of mold is twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Within three to twelve days, you have spores growing that begin to form colonies, which may be visible or spots or patches. The colonies can spread rapidly if moisture, within twelve-plus days, you have extensive contamination. If moisture's not controlled, mold, molds can spread rapidly. What you're dealing with is you're dealing with a, instead of just some mold, you're dealing with a whole house of mold. It, you have to be in Tyvek suits, you've gotta run air scrubbers while you're doing this, you've gotta have dehumidifiers running, these are all things that they have to do, a controlled demolition. I did this for a living. I know it's involved, it is expensive. And this may even be above, uh, you know, Robin's wheelhouse. Robin can, you know, hire people that are experts in this. I, I don't know if she would like to do a, a full demo like this, this is, this is a specific specified demolition, so.
I know Commissioners, and, and, you know, the mold grows, but the hurricane happened back in October, so there's mold there if there's mold there.
I know, but you know what I also wanted to tell you? Yes, you're right, we could have other people coming before us, but each one that wants to, um, override HPP has to come to us, they also have to do a presentation.
And I don't think that presentation was sound, honestly. If, you know, the, the owner did, did a great job, but.
Out of respect for the crowd, I think we should just vote. I think everyone knows here how they're gonna vote.
I'm agreeing to Commissioner Banther, I would like to just dump this, you know, as far as, let them do the demo and must move on.
You know, I haven't, in all deference to our Plaine Director, I haven't heard what exactly the information that's gonna be given that is going to somehow make that house, um, uh, uh, make it able to be rehabilitated. I, I just, I, I don't know what you're gonna ask of them.
I'm, I'm not saying that you will, I'm saying that the, the evidence that was presented was largely conversational in the meeting. They're looking for a report, a written report with documentation about the structural, you know, what, what has happened to it, photographic evidence, an analysis, a document. We had one sheet of paper with some numbers on it, with nothing really else, I mean, there was a, there was a lead thing, that, you know, a lead report that was provided. If I'm, you know, the, the board was not comfortable with the level of information that they had. Should've they just trusted Ms. Hancock and voted for it? I, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, and, and again.
I have, let me, let me, let me, let me make a suggestion.
Sure, sure.
We have a whole slew of planning, general planning consultants, and we have several that are historic preservation qualified people. I would like to be able to go out, get one of them, we can go immediately to them and get some advice on this. Whether they analyze the current data that we've got and give us a report, or say this is what you would, that we would need, uh, that's what I would like to do.
Let me ask the City Attorney, is there an avenue here that would allow that evidence to come to us versus having to go back to planning, going back to HPP, and then coming back to us again?
Only if you continue this matter to allow that evidence to be presented directly in front of you.
I'd like to request a continuance on the basis of Mr. Banther said he was leaving at eleven thirty and it's not enough time to hear the application.
I'm not gonna leave at eleven thirty, I'll, I'll.
I would like a continuance, Mr. Mayor, and I could potentially supplement the record to get you what you need. I would like a continuance.
If that's what the board is asking for, that supplement the information, the applicant could present it to you, and then you would determine this one way or the other, that...
Would you be comfortable with that, Commissioner Banther?
Sure. I just don't wanna relitigate this all over again, and, because everyone here loves to talk, just nonstop.
Rather than sending them back to HPP, we, we gather the data, it comes back here, and we make a determination.
Sure.
Is, is that, is that seem like a fair compromise?
I'm, I'm fine with that, I would just like the record to indicate that the continuance was granted, so the hearing is still open, Mr. Mayor.
That, yeah, that would be the purpose, um, and I'm, I'm in agreement, that we would continue the hearing, therefore we don't have to read, hear everything, we're just adding for the supplement or information.
Okay, so, how do we procedurally go through it with a motion on the, on the floor?
Vote this down, the current one.
Well, I withdraw, if the maker would withdraw it and the second withdraw it, and we just, uh, make a motion to continue, uh, second and vote on.
Would you do that, Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Do you need to continue to a date certain?
I, I wanna just end it tonight. The way. I, well, I would say, the one thing I would say to you is the applicant has asked for the continuant, continuance, because they know, I think that they just need to supplement it, working with the city, to present that information so that the majority, at least the rest of the Commissioners.
City Attorney, I can withdraw that if they wish to vote, and then subsequently, based on the vote, make a determination if the continuance is needed, because the hearing is still, is still ongoing. That would be proper. because the hearing is still, is still ongoing. That would be proper.
Right, I, I don't want them to vote on, on the motion because then that concludes it and then we're.
And let, let me, let me, let me make a comment to my Vice Mayor. Everything, you made the most compelling statements tonight. Obviously you have expertise that none of us have. But for the sake of process, and, and that's all what I'm concerned with. I, I think they need to be able to tear their building down. But going back to what Commissioner Culias says is about when we, about precedent, creating some standard of, and, and let's, let's allow him, grant him the continuance, let him bring some additional information. Let's re, we won't, we don't have to go all the way back to square one because we've done most of the, of the conversation. And then we can do what we need to do. And that way at least we're setting a, some standard for the, that our staff feels comfortable with the information being granted, being given to us. Can we, can we do that?
Listen, I, I'm going to go along with the masses, but as far as I'm concerned, this should be.
You're going to pull your second.
Say again?
You'll pull your second.
Well, he pulls my, well, the first meeting in June. Then my second is.
Let's go June, first meeting in June.
So now let's, let's have a motion to grant the applicant a continuance.
We would ask for date certain for the first meeting in June.
First meeting in June, are you okay with that?
No objection, Mr. Mayor, no objection, that's fine.
Can I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second, is there a second? Okay, roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Unfortunately, yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. I look forward to seeing you in June.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item twenty-six, ordinance twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five dash zero six, first reading land development code amendment, amending Article Two District Regulations twenty-five dash twelve, HB Highway Business District. Let, this, this goes straight to you?
Yeah.
To Renee.
Do you need to read the ordinance title?
Yeah, I'll just read the title. Ordinance twenty-twenty-five oh six, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article Two District Regulations, Section twenty-five twelve HB Highway Business District, Providing for Codification, Conflict Severability, Correction of Scrivener's Errors, Construction, Publication and Effective Date, and that is ordinance twenty-twenty-five oh six, read by title only on first reading.
I'll be very brief. Again, this is ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero six. We received a request to consider amending the land development code to add schools of general education as an allowable use in one form or another, either as permitted or conditional. Schools of special education are permitted use in the highway business district. There's a request was from a church that has already in existence and in the highway business district and they want to add a school of general education that would be a parochial school. So the only way that they can get there is to hopefully request and get, get an amendment to the land development code. We took this to the Planning and Zoning Board. They ultimately did recommend approval of a vote by five-two to allow, change the code to allow schools of general education as a conditional use. And they also recommended that the schools of special education be changed from permitted to conditional. That is the way the ordinance is before you tonight. We followed the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation and so that's the recommend, that is the recommendation.
Uh, let's go to, is there any public comment? Austin?
There are no public comments at this time.
Okay, are there, let's, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Banther?
No.
Commissioner DiDonato? Commissioner Culias?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor?
Oh, nope.
Okay, I have none. The chair will entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
Okay, are there any comments, Commissioner Banther?
No.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No.
Commissioner Culias?
No, sir.
No.
Vice Mayor and none myself. Roll call, please.
If approved, the second reading will be on May twenty-seventh and this was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on April second and will also be published tomorrow on May fourteen, twenty-twenty-five. Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Item twenty-seven, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash two, this is second reading, land development code amendment, amending Article Four of the Special Regulations. Do you want to read it?
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five oh two, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article Four, Special Regulations, Section fifty-nine, Docs, Piers and Shoreline Stabilization Structures, Providing for Codification, Conflict Severability, Correction of Scrivener's Errors, Construction, Publication and Effective Date, that is ordinance twenty-twenty-five oh two, read by title only on second reading. Publication was done by Tampa Bay Times on February fifth, twenty-twenty-five and April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Renee, is there any additional information in the second reading?
There is no new information for this.
Okay, are there any public comments on this item? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Okay, are there any questions of staff? With, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Sir.
Okay, Commissioner Banther, you have any comments?
No.
Commissioner DiDonato? Commissioner Culias?
No, sir.
Vice Mayor? I have none. Let's have roll call, please.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Item twenty-eight, ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero three, again, a second reading, land development code amendment, amending Article eleven sign regulations, temporary banners. Like to read it, please?
Ordinance twenty-twenty-five oh three, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article eleven sign regulations, Section one-nine-two-point-zero-two, temporary banners, providing for codification, conflict severability, correction of scrivener's errors, construction, publication and effective date, that is ordinance twenty-twenty-five oh three, read by title only on second reading, publication was at Tampa Bay Times on February, hold on, fifth, twenty-twenty-five and April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Renee, is there any additional information on the second reading?
No, sir.
Are there any public comments?
I'm regretting my decision to not have dinner before I came. I'm going to speak a little bit. My name is George Lane on the North Jasmine Avenue in Tarpon Springs. I own three businesses here in Tarpon.
State your name and address, please.
George Lane, thirteen oh four Jasmine Avenue. I was speaking too fast, I'm sorry. I own three businesses here in Tarpon. Two are online, one's a new retail location. This sign banner is very important to me, obviously, to be here at eleven-thirty. We recently put out a banner on a Saturday, a finger flag. We increased our business thirty-six percent. We put it out again on Monday, not knowing it was against ordinance. We increased our business sixty-four percent on that Monday. That Monday, the, the code enforcement officer lives in Dunedin was driving by our location all through nineteen and informed me it's not available to us. So he suggested I come here and speak, why we want to cover that, why that's so important to us to have that ordinance now that we can temporarily at least have that finger flying out. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Austin?
There are no online comments.
Uh, are there any questions of staff? Or the applicant? Or no, it's not an applicant, I apologize. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Sir.
Are there any other comments? None, being, none being seen, let's go to roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Yes.
Commissioner Culias?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Colianis?
Yes. Okay, that concludes all of our items. Let's go to board and staff comments. Major? You're, you're a major now, right, or?
Yes, sir.
All right.
It's Law Enforcement Appreciation Week. We thank the public for support in law enforcement. Please continue. We really appreciate the board's support for the police department, so thank you.
City Attorney?
No comments, man.
City Manager?
No comments.
City Clerk? Commissioner Banther?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner DiDonato?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Culias?
No comments.
Commissioner Eisner?
You giving me seven minutes to speak? Wow, that's amazing. No, I just wanted to thank you for, it was a joke. I, I just wanted to thank you for the proclamation. And look, I want to thank the board because this was a, a pretty, I, I thought it would be a lot easier. But, you know, I, I love the, the constructive battle, you know, of different opinions and you know what? Let's get out of here.
And, and, you know, I concur. Again, I've always said, you know, governing is messy. I was happy. We, we went through a process, we got to some, something and again, it's, I, I, and I really, I want to say, and I, and I'm not continuing low in smoke of you, but you made some really compelling points.
I have my moments.
I know, well, thank you, all right? Okay. Meeting adjourned, eleven twenty-five.